This is a regular.
Whoa.
Good.
Voices from above. Extra authority tonight.
Actually, John is.
This is a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we proceed, a town planner would like to mention something and read us something into the record.
Good evening. Unfortunately, our court reporter is not able to be with us this evening. She was here earlier and now cannot be here. And as a result, I would just like to read into the record the Connecticut State Statute, Section 8-7A, which we follow for proceedings as it relates to recordings of these meetings. So when we get to the public hearing, obviously, we won't have her to transcribe. However, the sound recording device that we do have will be active, and we also have, of course, the videographer. So I'll just read the statute into the record. Evidence at hearings and meetings to deliberate formal petitions, applications, requests, or appeals to be taken by a stenographer or recorded. The zoning commission, planning commission, planning and zoning commission, and zoning board of appeals shall call in a competent stenographer to take the evidence, or shall cause the evidence to be recorded by a sound recording device in each hearing before such commission or board in which the right of appeal lies to the Superior Court, and at each meeting in which such commission or board of appeals deliberates any formal petition, application, request, or appeal. So as I said, we will be recording, and we will ask our court reporter to transcribe those tapes afterwards, so everything will be back to normal in a few weeks. Thank you.
On this evening's agenda, there are several postponements and withdrawn applications. Number three, Miltides LLC is postponed. Number six, South Water Street is postponed. Number seven, CRK is withdrawn. Number eight, CRK is withdrawn. So with that reduced agenda, we shall start with number one, a request for a 90-day extension to file a subdivision Mylar.
I couldn't have said it better myself, Mr. Chairman. We request your approval.
Okay. Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the public? This item is closed. I can have a motion.
I hereby move approval of a 90-day extension for this application, which would move the Mylar filing date to the 28th of June 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Number two, Thomas S. Ward trustee. You're not Thomas S. Ward.
No, I'm not.
It's on so loud that I didn't, but I will now.
Just one question before we begin. I don't think Ms. Albon's microphone was on, so should I take that responsibility tonight to remind you when your microphone's not on? Just in case.
And could you, if Mr. Tessie comes, could you follow him around?
Yeah, look at that. Now your microphone's off again.
No, it was on.
The red button.
Yeah, okay. Maybe just.
I guess not. The red button's not working. Maybe your microphone's not working at all.
In all seriousness, when we get to the public hearing, if your mic's not working, we will have to give you the hand mic.
Well, it is. I think hers is working now.
Okay.
The light was off.
Mr. Thomas Ward is the trustee, as the applicant by name. This is the application to provide some open space and perpetuity. In the last 10 years or so, it's been the subject of an application for four-lot subdivision, conservation zone, 100-unit development, and now what we're proposing is to give away 76,344 square feet to the Greenwich Land Trust, contingent upon, of course, this approval, which we refer to as a revision of lot lines to dedicate one small parcel to the southwest to Eric and Deborah Fram Schwartz, who are the neighboring property owners. The purpose of that transfer would be to improve sightlines around the corner of that property, which is constrained right now by the curb in the road. The other parcel is dedicated to Georgetown, as you know, to actually convey to them area that they've been using and is currently maintained as lawn. With me tonight is Mr. Richard Mancuso, who is an attorney representing the trustee of the property, to confirm if you have any questions about the mechanics of how the conveyance will take place after the approval of this proposal. It has been approved in concept by the Wetlands Agency, which included a proposal to create a meadow on a majority of the property, basically clean up the area, and there's a plan to create that meadow that was part of the approval and the permit that was issued. The rest of the property, as highlighted in green, will stay in a natural state. I anticipated that you might be concerned that at some day something would change, and it might suddenly become a subdivision, which is certainly not in the planning, but I did provide a note that suggests that in the future, if that were to occur, we understand that there would be a set aside of open space of the remaining parcel.
Just on that note, on your drawing, what we have generally done on similar situations is that whenever a piece is changed in this manner, we ask the open space be calculated on the original parcel size and not the reduced parcel size. So if that change could be made, since it's going to the Land Trust and will never be, but it should be on the full parcel size.
That's fine. So I'll change the note to reflect that.
Right.
It makes a difference of about 2,000 square feet in open space.
Right. But it will, just if it ever happens, and we hope it doesn't.
I would point out also that there is a proposal to improve drainage along the road. Again, contingent upon the approval, we'll apply for a highway permit to make those improvements. Currently, the runoff from the street dumps a lot of sand into the area, which settles in the pond at the northwest corner, so the objective is to create a curb and a basin to intercept the sand, keep it out of the pond. So that's, again, part of the permit that was issued by the Wetlands Agency.
Okay.
Overall, very simple proposal, complicated.
The southwest parcel is kind of easy, because that's zoned R-12 now and will remain R-12 when it goes. I think the zone up in the upper right-hand corner is, since it is zoned R-12, but it's going to Georgetown, will it still maintain an R-12 zone? Because right now it has to, I think.
Good question, perhaps. It should be, I don't know if you can make it as a condition or if we have to make a separate application, but that's appropriate. It is in the conservation zone.
It is a part of the conservation.
It's a part of conservation development, yes.
Okay.
That's a good point.
If it's surrounded on both sides by the conservation zone of Georgetown?
North and east.
That's what I'm saying. So when that piece gets attached to Georgetown, it'll be attached to Conservation Park?
Yes.
As opposed to?
But the zone line would not follow the orange line right now.
Um.
Good point.
I think it's probably a separate application.
I kind of don't know what to do. I guess let's do it as an, if we do it and it remains R-12, if you ever wanted to for any reason to develop, you'd have to come back and come before.
Okay. I think that's the way to do it, because if you're going to rezone, it's a whole different notification.
They were trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Well, you know us. We like to do it complicated as possible.
There are three entities involved, so it's just, it's complicated enough.
But I think we'll leave it as 12.
Yes, sir.
Then the only other thing was that Conservation had some comments regarding the two-year maintenance of the meadow land. She would like to have it extended to five years. Apparently, there's a lot, in her opinion, there's a lot of invasive species there.
The plan, of course, is to improve that, whatever it is. The Land Trust has a vested interest in keeping it.
Right.
I don't know where the conservation comments were during the application to the Wetlands Agency, but I don't think that the Land Trust would have a problem. We'll have to clarify that, but if you want to make it a condition, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay.
That's pretty standard course in the Declaration of Restrictions for properties that they manage.
I just want to make an observation that the size of the parcels that are being transferred out of this, if it is approved, do not render either of the other two parcels able to create additional lots and so forth.
Correct.
They are smaller than the R-12, 12,000-square-foot requirement for a lot.
And to that point, also, we're recognizing on the record that these are not lots being created. They're parcels to be annexed to addition, I mean, to existing properties.
But they are such a size that it doesn't make the one to the south able to re-subdivide it.
Correct.
Again.
At the time that you would be filing this map on the land records, would you be filing merger maps simultaneously for the other, you know, for the other two pieces?
That can be done, of course. It wasn't the intent at this time, but they can be done. You don't file a map each time. It's not, we call this a revision of lot lines. We're not doing a true subdivision. We're hoping that you find it to be not a subdivision.
Neither, right.
And it isn't, because we're not creating lots. Therefore, it's a revision of lot lines, and therefore, we're conveying those parcels out, and we don't intend to make a map of each one. The mapping of Georgetown would be a significant undertaking.
Right. But it's, you have that, don't you, though? In other words, are you planning to file a map on the land records to show this revision? Because if you are, it would need to, it should include, obviously, the land that it's being visited.
We didn't intend to file a map of each property.
Yeah, this is going to be filed.
We want to file this map.
Yeah.
As a revision of lot lines would be the preference.
Yeah. Well, we have to make a finding. It's neither a subdivision nor a re-subdivision, so.
That's why I was hoping it was a revision of lot lines.
And if that is the finding that you end up making, maybe you should add a note onto the plan, then, that makes that point abundantly clear.
Which point?
That they're not being created as separate parcels, and that the intent is to merge them into the other pieces, and if they.
Katie, to that end, I had already anticipated that. I just said in note number three, parcel S is not a building lot, is to be conveyed to the Schwartz-Fram owners of dwelling number 45. Parcel G, not a building lot, is to be conveyed to Georgetown North Condominiums. It's clear that it's not building lots.
I think we're, I guess, okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the public? This item is closed.
Thank you.
Take a motion.
I hereby move approval of this application, in so doing, the finding that this is neither a subdivision nor a re-subdivision. The following conditions shall apply to this. First, the open space, if it is ever done, if an open space is ever provided on this, be based on the original lot size at this time. That at this point, all this property will remain R-12. That the map contains the note that parcel S and parcel G are not building lots, and that this does not create the possibility, that this application does not create the possibility of additional lots. In addition, the applicant has agreed to five years of intensive maintenance on the landscaping to ensure the elimination of the invasive species. And then finally, there are some notes from staff regarding some corrections that will be addressed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're really ready to go tonight, aren't you?
I am, yes. And good evening to you, Mr. Manchin, members of the commission. This is an application that you heard in December relating to.
Just one second. Victoria Goss is seated on this one for Mr. Levy.
Thanks, Peter.
Oh, and Mr. Yaski's seated also. Yes. Okay, now we're good.
And the application is for a site plan approval to allow the addition of 16 parking spaces at the buildings located at 1445 and 1455 East Putnam Avenue, and I've got an aerial photo here to show, remind you really of where the property is. It's on the eastern end of the Post Road, next to a large gasoline station car wash. The commons development is, was originally part of the office complex, office building across the street, and the Hyatt Hotel, just a little further to the east. Originally, when we came before this commission in December, this was the plan that was presented. The goal here was to put an additional driveway down this part of the office property next to the Post Road.
Mr. Cohen, would you mind taking the mic? I'm having difficulty hearing you, I think, because the board's on the other side. Thank you.
Can you see this, Katie?
I can see it, but I can't.
You couldn't hear it? Yeah. Anyway, it related to the addition of 16 spaces, which was enabled by the addition of a driveway along the Post Road side of the property. There were a number of comments from both this agency and Conservation Commission, which although they generally approved it, did have some comments, and the leading comment really related to revising the location of these spaces, so as to create angled spaces rather than perpendicular spaces. This had the effect of creating additional green area, and that in turn allowed us to prepare a much more robust landscape plan, which was submitted to this commission, submitted to the Conservation Department, and to ARC. ARC and Alexander Muck approved the revisions. Part of this, at the request of ARC, was to modify the light fixture, which was done. We also submitted a schedule showing all the existing occupancies in these two buildings, and how parking was allocated to them. And we also filed with you a maintenance protocol showing how the town required maintenance to be conducted for porous asphalt, which was a feature of this application. And so if you have any questions, I've got the engineer and the landscape architect here tonight.
Just a couple of comments. I know that staff had indicated that they want a zoning permit filed on this.
Yes.
Okay. One. And two, any changes to the tenancy, of course, going to more doctors or something, should be submitted for an administrative review, and if it's necessary, they'll decide if it needs to come to the commission, but I think administrative site plan review would.
We understand that, yes.
Suffice for that. I think it's, I think the Conservation has already commented on it, but I applaud you for the number of trees that you're putting in. Sort of the nine that you're taking down are.
I applaud my client for being willing to pay for them.
Any other questions for the commission?
Nope.
All right. Any questions from the public? This item is closed.
I hereby move approval of this final site plan. In so doing, we note that the applicant changed the parking to angled parking and was thus able to revise the landscaping versus the previous appearance before the commission. The applicant is now proposing 34 trees versus the original nine, and this landscaping, this revised landscaping plan has been reviewed and endorsed by both ARC and Conservation. The applicant has agreed to return for either administrative review or full commission review of the tenant mix changes on this property, and that the applicant will obtain a zoning permit for the work to be performed on the site, and any other relevant staff and departmental comments will apply.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is now the public hearing. The first item on our agenda is 18 Parsonage Road.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Brower, on behalf of the applicant. This is a proposal to modify and add to an existing residence. The project was first reviewed and approved by the commission back in 2008, at which point the house was approved. There was a pool, terracing, a new garage, and so that was approved in '08. The house itself was built, and some of the terracing, but the rest of it did not move forward. The time period expired. We have a new owner of the property who wants to pick up where it was left off. So essentially, what the proposal today would be to construct the previously approved garage and to add terracing to the back and add a pool and cabanas on either side of it. Slightly different than what was in the original approval, but essentially the same concept.
The pool house itself, though, is out.
Pardon me?
The pool house, which was a part of the other, is out.
Exactly. No, no. Well, we have, these are, this one pergola is completely open.
But it's open.
Right. And this one has a roof on it. This one just has a lattice roof.
Right.
And this one has a roof, but is open.
But it's not enclosed.
Right. Correct. So the only square feet, actually, that's being added is the garage itself.
Right.
And so we've worked with, I spoke with Alex back and forth today, as well as with Patrick, on her concerns about the rain garden, and we're going to be modifying the bioswale that runs along here, discharged from the Coltex, to function as a rain garden as well. So we'll be meeting with her on DPW to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
So you are doing the rain garden?
Yes. Well, it's a.
Okay.
A bioswale slash rain garden.
Yeah, it was, that was what was confusing in the email chain to me, the bioswale slash, because I thought you didn't want to do it.
Well, we can achieve what she wants by modifying it, so it'll work to everybody's interests, so.
There was a note on one of the landscape drawings that there are a couple of pear trees that are being removed from the town right-of-way.
Oh, within the right-of-way.
Yeah. Anything there would have to go through the tree warden, obviously, before it could
be removed. Exactly.
Conservation, we have that.
And the kitchen comment.
Oh, yeah.
The kitchen.
Yeah.
No kitchen. No kitchen.
There's all over the drawings, there's word "kitchen."
It's on every drawing.
So we're going to have, we'll have to deal with that. We're going to come up with something else, because we need to call it something else. But for now, just don't call it a kitchen.
Exactly. Right, so between.
Outdoor, no.
Well, just for now, no. We'll make up something, because somebody thought it'd be better if it was called a barbecued area or something. We'll come up with something.
So it's just.
Whatever.
Pergola with permitted features.
Right. We could do that. I think we just note that the square footage that was approved under the original proposal is larger. In other words, this is not increasing any square footage, it's reducing square footage from that proposal.
Correct. And the, although the garage, I think there's a typo here, it's an increase of 790, it's 790, not 780.
Well, that was still a part of the old one.
Correct. Yes. Yep.
Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the public? We close this item.
Great. Thank you.
Or is it?
He is here.
I saw him walk in.
Somebody make sure he holds the mic.
Who's next?
Numbers nine and 10.
Hearing number nine, going once. Going twice.
All right. I move we deny this applicant.
All right. What do they give a full professor, 10 minutes?
Do we have anybody for?
Just thinking.
Do we have anybody eyed on 10?
10 for a adjunct.
Oh, he made it within 15 seconds. He's safe.
We're done. I think we see him the rest of the evening.
He doesn't have his arts and crafts.
They give the professors 15 minutes. We gave you 15 seconds. You made it.
You were on the clock, just to let you know.
I don't see any arts and crafts, though.
What do we have first?
Well, 23 and 25, I think we almost have to take those.
We did. We combined them last hearing.
Yeah. I think they should be combined, because everything's just, yeah.
You've got the boards. What happened to Tony?
We're moving at warp speed tonight, and your Sloan is down.
Well, with respect to 23 and 25, while he brings the board, I don't know where the hell.
You want to go grab a cup? You want to take a minute and see if you can find him?
You want to go find him? He was right next to me.
Here he comes. Here he comes.
He's not the last.
When do we get the bill?
Mr. Tessie, you got the word that, obviously, we don't have a court reporter, so if you could make sure that you really do speak into the mic.
Speak up. Speak up. I hear that every meeting, so.
No, but it's important tonight.
It's really important tonight. Okay. It's really important. I understand.
And introduce yourself.
Don't let go of the microphone and wander off.
Plus, I want everybody in the audience to hear me, so.
Well, there's that one person in the back row.
There we go. Okay. Mr. DeAndrea is here. We have our combined site plan of 23 and 25. Woodland and the.
Sorry, can you just introduce?
Woodland Drive. I introduce myself. I'm Mr. Tessie, John Tessie. I'm here with Mr. Tony DeAndrea, representing the applicants on the two application. With respect to 23, it's Bamsy 23 Woodland Drive LLC, and with respect to 25, it is Nutmeg Realty LLC. On the board here, as I indicated, we have a combined site plan. 23 is on the lower side or the east side of the plan, and 25, for the record, is on the west side of the plan. These are two rectangular lots, property lying through the middle. The proposals on both properties are to develop them with a two-family home on the north side or what we call the Woodland Drive side, and a single-family home on the railroad avenue side. The properties, as you know, are both bifurcated by a zone line, GB on the south, R6 on the north. When we last appeared before you, there was one main issue to be resolved for engineering, with Engineering Department, and that had to do with the position of the Engineering Department, that we install a, I'll call a sidewalk, because it is a sidewalk, but meeting essentially the standard specifications of the DPW, and that is along Railroad Avenue. In this particular zone, in the business zone, the applicants are required to install a sidewalk. The sidewalk, because of the width of Railroad Avenue at this location and the amount of pavement on it, would need to be on our property as opposed to the town of Greenwich's property, our property, meaning my client's, two properties. We had to work out some shifts of buildings on the properties with the help of your staff so that we could create some rear yard area for the two homes, two single-family homes on the south side, and also meet the requirements, again, of your Engineering Division, specifically Jim Michael and Scott Marucci. And Mr. DeAndrea was able, as you know, to accomplish that to the satisfaction of the two engineers. Now, one of the issues here, which I believe is resolved, last comments I've seen from DPW, was that, was the question of ownership of the sidewalk. And there are two elements of that. One is who's going to pay for the construction of the sidewalk, and we agreed it would be the owners of the properties. And two would be, once completed, who is going to, how is the town going to control it? We suggested an easement for the town for pedestrian use of the general public. I submitted a draft easement document that combined the two ownerships, granting easements to the town of Greenwich, using as a template. easements to the town of Greenwich, using as a, a template what we've worked on before, what we used before, with, uh, SOAR Division and also DPW. And I think it's been conceptually approved, but obviously, the law department would look at it, and we, Tony, Tony DeAndrea will finalize a specific easement plan, uh, that will be recorded in the land records, once finally approved by DPW. This is a perpetual easement.
I think one of the other things, too, are the cross easements that are gonna be necessary to use the driveways and the parking areas between the two properties.
Yes, there will be...
Haven't been submitted or anything, but they need, that would...
Yeah, we have, there, we have a cross easement now for this area, which is ten, ten feet on either side, uh, but you make a good point about the driveway, um, and we can make that a condition that we'll, we'll submit a cross easement parking, basically, it's a cross parking and access easement. We also need it for our drainage system, too. That may be a separate, uh, easement, but maybe I can combine them all into one. Try to figure out a way to spend as much time on it as possible.
Okay, that's a laudable goal.
Um, the only other question I know of has to do, which I'm sure somebody's gonna bring up, is the SOAR department comments, SOAR Division comments. Um, I reviewed them, I sent an e- email to Pat, Tony can better explain it, but I don't s- I, I think you s- I don't know if he shared the easement, but I, I mean, I, I assume you all read the comments.
Right.
And the comments are, are not atypical, I mean, they are atip- are, are typical of generally what we, we see from the SOAR Division, we ordinarily see two pages in recent times. And really, at the end of the day, what Mr. Fennel- Feminella stated was that our engineer should arrange a meeting after having done specific inspections, uh, by professionals of the SOAR lines, with, uh, Mr. Feminella, to work out the plans for providing SOAR lines to each of, of the properties. There are identi- as you know, there are identical comments in both. So specifically, what, what I know from his, uh, comments...
Well, there's the one about the six, you, you, you're coming out of this property...
The eight, the eight going into the six.
Yeah.
It's not a problem, because, no, 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 let me rephrase what I'm saying.
The email from this afternoon from Rich.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
Okay, so, from Rich Feminella, so he says he has capacity downstream sewer system capacity concerns.
What he's saying is this.
And that he, and, and Patrick, and Patrick and I went back and forth about this this evening, because I found the last email a little hard to understand, because he said it had to be addressed during the P and C, P and Z stage, and I said, what the heck does that mean, during the P and Z stage? And what Patrick says that means is...
Well, yeah, it, it, there was an earlier email chain to that email, and what I asked specifically, the question was, does this need to be addressed now in the P and Z phase or with the permit phase? And his response back there was the P and Z fr- phase, stage, excuse me.
So he's telling us, so while, so he's saying, prior to finals, prior to site plan approval?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, we disagree, we're gonna disagree, there's no more time.
Well, you have until the twenty-third.
Yeah, so we could do it next, next meeting.
We want approval tonight, I think we're entitled to an approval tonight. I think there hasn't been one time, let, let me just, first of all, let me digress to what I was saying, and I defer to you. What he states, at the end of the day, please coordinate with the SOAR Division to discuss how, not if, how, to connect to the town sanitary SOAR main. That's what he states, and that's perfectly acceptable. There isn't one thing he's written in here that we are looking to argue against. We're aware of the eight going into the six, fine.
I get that.
We're aware of every issue, but at the end of the day, well, no, my point is this, you have to make a decision.
Right.
Okay, of whether or not it means anything to you. And my point is, I don't know what it means to you. If it were a drainage issue, I get that, there are neighbor issues you'd logically be concerned about, downstream issues you'd be concerned about. When it comes to a SOAR line, the only thing that matters to you, that the SOAR department issues a permit, is put in the SOAR department hand, they're either gonna issue a permit or they're not. I'm perfectly comfortable to state, from a zoning standpoint, that you specifically condition the approval, if I can be presumptuous, you'll approve it, but assuming you approve the applications, that you'll condition the approval on there will be no issuance of a zoning permit for either parcel until we have SOAR permits for the two properties. Because that means is that we can't go to the building department without a zoning permit, we can't go anywhere. And to me, that satisfies the spirit of the issue. Because you're concerned, we don't wanna get po- positioned where we approve something that can't be built. Fine, condition it, uh, uh, on a zoning permit.
Mr. Tessie...
Yes, Mr. Levy.
Would you be able to give us an idea of ways that you could satisfy the situation? Yes.
That, that, that was...
So that, so that we know, well, there's a myriad of different ways to solve this.
Yeah, Tony's a per-...
Pumps, whatever they are, kind of thing.
Yeah, it's not a pump issue, Tony will explain it.
I think that's a good thing to put on the record.
Good, Tony.
Downstream capacity. Yes, yes, we, we, no, I know, but the email came...
For the record, we should state that there's virtually no sewer system in, uh, Woodland Drive, so that pumping up or going down to Woodland is a, a non-issue, can't be done.
Mr. DeAndrea, can you state your name on the record?
Yes.
Tell us, you're Tony DeAndrea.
Yeah, I will.
I didn't get a copy of this late email here, that...
I'm sorry, it was, it was, it came to us at the end of the day, so it was emailed out.
Do you wanna just read it into the record?
I'm after five o'clock.
No, four o'clock.
Ah, impossible, I...
This is dated two fifty-six PM and three thirty-four PM.
To, no, I take it back. Oh, you have it.
Hold on. And Patrick says, sends it to us, it's at four forty-two.
Correct.
And it says, it says, um, from Carol Mandris, it says, I, um, that this is a tricky spot, and the downstream sewer system has capacity concerns, which is what we were trying to understand yesterday, is what is the sewer department asking about? So now, I'm sorry, Mr. DeAndrea, for the interruption.
Okay, no problem. My name is Tony DeAndrea, and I'm the, um, professional engineer working on the site design, which has had some interesting challenges that we've met and accomplished, and we now have a very good plan. But the issue regarding the sanitary sewer has been addressed in several notes on the plan, and we recognize that Mr. Feminella has been basically unavailable for about six weeks, and we, um, sympathize with his condition, his situation, but resolving minor details has often been difficult. On our plan, we have specified that, right now, we have four units of, of service on the property, we're proposing a total of six, not something that would break the bank. What we notice is that we have the commercial building to the, to the west being serviced, as are the buildings on the property, and they all feed into a six-inch line. So we proposed, in our notes, in response to the comments initially made by Mr. Feminella, to inspect the line, work with the sewer department to determine whether or not he wants us to replace the line, or use it, or another, in some other way, um, sequence the flow out. It's very simple. The, the idea is that we would replace this line into the manhole, which is, um, very close to our property, but the question is whether or not he wants us to go back and replace the entire line serving the commercial property, or does he want us to go farther downstream, 'cause he implied that there might be a problem downstream. But the reality of it is, we're adding only two units to the, to the system, it's not an overload.
But Mr. DeAndrea, you, you have to go through this process with, with Mr. Feminella to get a permit.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so, coming back to a meeting in two weeks, I'm not seeing the hardship to do that, when you have to go through the process of getting this plan updated and approved from Mr. Feminella, whether it's right now, whether it's in two weeks, or whether it's a month, when you try to get the permit. So, coming to another meeting, I don't see how that's an...
Doesn't help us...
...an imposition on you.
The, the process with the sewer department is, um, iterative. We submit, we wait, we try to get a meeting, we discuss, we finally resolve it, that's the way it works.
And can't you do that within the next two weeks? I mean...
You cannot get a sewer permit from Mr. Feminella in two weeks, no matter what you do.
We would not, we never do, uh, we never require them to have a permit.
But what I'm saying, though, is, it's, they can, they, it's, it's not going to get resolved tomorrow, it'll be resolved within the next two weeks, so my, my point is, I'm not, I'm not understanding the hardship from them, when they need to get it resolved through Mr. Feminella.
I just, I think we tripped, he tripped up, and I felt I did too on the word permit.
Yeah, we, we don't have to have a permit.
We can't get a permit.
Right, but, my point is, he would not have gotten the permit within two weeks, that's exactly the point. So, so, considering that we have a meeting on the twenty-first in two weeks, I don't see how them coming back with a conceptual resolution from Mr. Feminella is a hardship, I mean, he's not gonna get the permit anyway, within the next two weeks, that, that's my only point.
May not be a hardship, but it's no, it's no further productive. The question is, Richard, do you want us to play, replace the entire line, or do you have another item that you want us to do? That's all. It hasn't said that. We've met with him. Let me just explain something else about this area.
Let me ask a simple question.
Yes, sir.
He brought this issue up in his November ninth...
That's correct.
...meeting. When did you submit changes to address...
We haven't, Mr. Fox, we haven't submitted any changes. Because we haven't been able to get a meeting.
Since November ninth.
Let me, let me say one other thing about what we've done here.
Just, for, since November ninth, you're telling me he refused to meet?
No, he didn't refuse to meet, we have, what we've been...
So, so I, again, I'm gonna ask you very clearly, why didn't you address his comments for November ninth?
I'm gonna give you an answer. There are other things that have been going on in this project. One, major shift of the buildings, reduction, reduction of parking, we're still wanting the commission to approve the site plan with the buildings as they're configured, with the parking, so we can go on and finalize the design. That's the answer. The, the, the issue is clear.
So why is...
We have a six-inch line on the street, do you want us to replace it? If you want it replaced, we'll replace it. Otherwise, it's not an issue to be concerned about, that we're taking an eight-inch main to handle the six units and bringing it down the property and into railroad avenue. Ultimately, we're going to have to handle the sewer, otherwise, we can't get a building permit.
Now, in addition...
We understand that, but you put us in an awkward position, because it's been on his table, in the public record, since November ninth. And it's been the issue, and it said downward flow, and then he was concerned with the eight and the six. And, and it's, and now you're asking us, this is the last issue, and we tried to get it resolved today, because he was out of the office, and he gave us a response that doesn't allow us to approve this tonight.
I'm sorry, but that's, that's not true.
That's a, what's his email say?
He does not have, let's, let's be clear about this, Mr. Fox, and this is one of the problems I've had for years. You make your decisions, okay? You can choose to defer to him, you can choose to defer to anyone, but in terms of making decision, it's your, it's yours. He can only give you comments. And plus, this can't be built without him being happy.
Totally understand.
Right, so my point is, there isn't a time when we obtain an approval, and, and there isn't one time that I recall, when we've obtained approval recently, and Mr. Feminella has written his two-page comments, that you haven't ended when your, your deliberations with the comment that, and satisfied all the requirements of the various departments per their, per their, per their comments, or their reports. My only point is, this is really not your issue, nor have you ever really taken it up in this type of project. The issue is whether or not he can be satisfied to issue a SOAR permit. He, and even in his own words, he said, this is a question of how you're going to do it. So my point to you is that, it's up to you, you wanna leave it open, you're certainly free to leave it open. The truth of the matter is, there's no way, given those requirements, if you look, look at them, what he wants, that they can all be accomplished, particularly at this time of the year, 'cause he wants inspections, he wants camera review, he wants analysis, it's not gonna get done in the next two weeks. And they have, but, but the end of the day, he actually controls, it's up to him, he, his division controls the issue. So I was just trying to say, as I was saying earlier, look, it's really an issue for him. So, but if it makes you comfortable, because you want, you, you feel you, you wanna, you know, that it's your approval, and you wanna have skin in the game, or whatever phrase you wanna use, fine.
Not have skin in the...
Then condition your, condition the issuance of a zoning permit on the issuance of a SOAR permit. You've never once ever conditioned a, a, an application, uh, uh, approval on the issuance of a SOAR permit, but I could see in this instance...
No, and you know...
Just to move it along, that you conditioned, what you have in the past, there's not gonna be a SOAR, there's not gonna be a zoning permit until something's satisfied. But I don't wanna beat it to death. If, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, the big urgency here has to do with time requirements on two contracts, and our client, right now, is in a penalty phase, 'cause it's dragged on a bit, in other words, it's costing him more to pay the seller, um, and we can't close until there's a decision made, and they're, and the fifteen-day appeal period has run. So it's an economic issue that's, that's costing our clients, our client thousands more, of more dollars to drag it on. So I'm saying, if you're otherwise comfortable, that's really the reason, that just stops the clock, he buys the property, and then he has to work it out with Mr., Mr. Feminella. But that's really what's going on, on that issue.
Mr. DeAndrea? Um, Mr. Feminella's notes from, uh, November ninth talk about, um, capacity at Arch Street. Uh, have you looked into that issue at all? Are you confident of it, and you've got the problems with the capacity issue in Arch Street, which is off the property down the block?
It's quite far removed from, from this property.
Right. I think it, it comes down on us to the crux of this issue, is that he's talking about, and in the email that we got today was about a capacity issue. Um, and I think it's the capacity down at the corner.
So if we're talking capacity at the issue, is the issue at Arch Street, we have to consider how much is actually flowing into Arch Street. He knows that that, this is not something that will impact that, he recognizes that he has a problem.
Yes.
We can't solve that problem.
Right.
Our problem is to take this, um, six units, increasing by two on the property, and decide how far down he wants us to replace the six-inch line, that's all it comes down to.
Okay.
You, I, I think the commission recognizes that the sewer commission, the sewer department's problem at Arch Street is not our problem, we cannot solve that problem.
But you can't provide to Mr. Feminella's office, uh, the information to, uh...
What he has to assess is whether or not these additional two units is going to adversely impact his problem...
Right.
Which he has not given to us, it's exactly what that is.
Can I stop you there?
Yes, sir.
Will you count for me where those six units are? Or the, or the four units currently are? There's only two buildings on these properties.
Right. To the best of my knowledge, they're two, two-family homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
I can tell you, well, I can tell you from your existing survey, there's one dwelling, number twenty-three, which is on, uh, Woodland, and there's the other dwelling, which is twenty-five, which is down on Railroad. If those are two-family, that's four.
Yes, sir.
Where's the other two?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 they're two-family houses.
They're both two-family, so there's four units. Two, four, two, four, six.
Yeah.
So four existing and six proposed.
I misunderstood you, because I thought you said, there were two buildings up at, okay.
No, it's net, two, two additional units.
Right.
Are these both, quote, legal two-family dwelling units? Just curious.
Um, well, we did municipal searches, and they, they're showing to be two-family units, um, the zoning would have permitted two, so, for a long time.
I misunderstood you when you, that's all.
So, Mr. DeAndrea, just to continue real quickly.
Could you have them convert, approve it for them?
He's, he's, clearly, needs to have this, uh, capacity issue looked at, from his point of view.
Correct.
He's looking for specific information from your office, uh, so he can actually study the problem. Has that information been collated and provided to him yet?
No.
Not in specific response to that, we're not in position to go out and meter his mains, if that's what he wants us to do.
I think it's more of actually the capacity coming off of here into his mains.
Exactly, so what we're proposing here is two additional units, and the questions that we've answered on the plans that he's reviewed are, do you or do you not want us to replace the line? That's all it comes down to.
Can I ask you another simple question?
Yes, sir.
What about the six, the eight-inch pipe going into a six-inch pipe? Have you reduced-
That's not, that's not a problem hydraulically, but we, we've noted that already, that we're bringing down an eight-inch main in the property because we're bringing individual laterals, and he likes to have that. Typically, he likes to have every unit have a separate lateral to the main. That's not possible here. So, we recognize that. We proposed a single main with manholes at each end. In fact, three manholes on that line. We need him to confirm that that's okay. He hasn't done that yet either. So, we're both at fault for not following through. There've been some logistical problems with just having him available as we finalized this plan after we moved all the buildings and changed all the design.
Well, he was quite specific when you go, when he, when he spoke, when the earlier memo says an eight to a six. I'm just going to ask you the simplest question.
Yes, sir. We're going to replace it.
Would you, just to be simple to answer that one specific question, would you be willing to commit to changing to a six-inch line coming out of your property?
Absolutely, if he wants us to. Typically, he wouldn't want us to do that.
Well, he commented on it in writing.
Yep. We're willing to do whatever he wants us to do. That's the whole point. We have to get a permit. At the end of the day, we're going to get a permit. There is no other solution to this problem. We have to be served. He has a responsibility to provide the sewer to us.
I understand that, but we, the two things, apparently capacities and that other comment that you've just answered, that you were willing to convert this eight-inch line to a six-inch line.
Within the property if necessary.
If that's, if that's what he wants you to do.
No problem.
You've got to speak in-
One of two things.
Can you start that over?
The six-inch upgraded to an eight-inch, probably, that's probably, let's face it, that's probably what he's going to ask for.
And you would be willing to do that?
You're going to have no choice. Exactly. There's already in these projects like this, I've done enough of them. What happens is, we do the four-inch laterals in two and eight. We sign, he has a specific declaration, gets recorded in the land records, so that the properties that all connect are all co-responsible for the, the maintenance of the main. That's one of his standard requirements. I've done it a number of times. But he's, I think we all know he's never going to agree to an eight-inch going into a six.
Okay.
So, Tony's going to talk to him to see if he'd agree, since there are relatively few units, a six into the six. That's about the only discussion they're going to have, and Rich is going to rule. I think we all know how he's going to rule.
Well, how's he going to rule? You said he's going to say-
I think he's going to go, I think he's going to go A to eight myself.
So, he's going to ask you to replace that six-inch pipe down along Railroad Avenue?
Unfortunately, most probably, but if not, then the eight on the property's going to get reduced to a six. It's going to be his call. That's basically the call.
No, I understand. That's A, B. You're willing to do either A or either B.
You don't have a choice.
I'm just saying, that's, if you want us to try to decide this tonight.
No, no, the answer is, we're going to do whatever, this is why I said, it's relatively simple.
No, I understand that, but I'd like to be specific.
We're going to do anything that Rich Feminella demands in order for our, for our client to get sewer permits for both of these properties, or they will not get developed. So, he controls the situation.
A, you're willing to commit to changing your eight-inch line to a six?
Yes.
Or B, you're willing to replace the six in the street to an eight? Or C, anything else that he may require?
There you go. Bingo. That's basically it.
Anybody?
I want to come back to the, to the easy, to the town right-of-way thing. Marucci had originally told you, Patrick, that he wanted to see a draft of-
He's given us his okay to that already. We have a memo from him.
And Mr. Tessie has provided a draft?
Yeah, that's what I said earlier.
And Mr. Marucci has amended his comments.
Right. So, I'm left with the sewer issue.
So, there's, there's one other issue, which is the, the sanitary sewer manhole cannot be constructed in the town right-of-way. Number three, that's moved, that's moved up and outside of the right-of-way, right?
I'm sorry.
The, the issue- Addition that the sanitary sewer for the connection cannot be in the town right-of-way. That was his comment.
It won't be in the town right-of-way, it'll be in there right-of-way, won't it, if it's-
The sanitary sewer can't be in the town right-of-way?
It says the manhole.
The sanitary manhole, if it's on the town main, it has to be in the town right-of-way.
He said, he, I'm reading from his comment. It says, "In addition, a sanitary sewer manhole, number three, cannot be constructed in the town right-of-way."
It's just illogical.
What it says?
Sorry, on the record, it's illogical. The main that services other properties is located in Railroad Avenue. There's no other way to make a connection.
I connected to manholes that are in the right-of-way.
Well, but he doesn't want this one.
If he doesn't want the manhole in the street, then it goes on our property. It'll go under a sidewalk. That's just not going to happen. And you have to relocate the sewer. That's not what our intent is. Our intent is to replace the sewer with the proper size as, as acquired by the sewer department. But the sewer is currently in the right-of-way.
With existing manholes?
There are no manholes, Mr. Fox, okay? The, the next manhole is down serving the condos and other properties across the street, the commercial buildings. They all come into this manhole.
But that manhole is in the town right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
That's, my point is, it is standard-
East of our property, excuse me. It's here, and we're going to take that out and replace that line by, with a manhole, because we have to pick up another property to the west.
And assuming you would need a highway permit to do that regardless?
Same thing. It's just like the sewer permit. We can't do the construction unless we get the permits that are required. Highway permit, sewer permit, building permit. Those are all come later.
Addition, a sanitary sewer manhole, SSM, each, number three.
Yeah.
Cannot be constructed in the town-
Is this on the record? Because if, if so, can you repeat that, please?
The town right, the town right-of-way. So-
We'll respond to it. It cannot be any other way.
Well-
Mr. DeAndre, wish, number three is, is going from right to left on the page, is the-
Sanitary manhole, number three-
The farthest?
Is the farthest south. It's indicated on the plan.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
The sanitary sewer manhole three is shown to the south of the right-of-way. You remember that the right-of-way here for this building, which sits right, number 25, sits right on the road, up on the elevated wall that supports it. So, the right-of-way makes a jog as you head west. It jogs west, I mean, south, about 10 feet, and then continues west before it jogs back in to the face of the hardware store building. The line that serves that hardware store building can't go through our property. It goes just outside, based on the markings that we have. Therefore, our proposal was to build a manhole on that. What are the other options? If we have an eight-inch main, you can bring an eight-inch main down and do a, a lateral connection with a T. So, that could be done if Mr. Feminella wants that, but because there are six units coming into that line, I don't think that that would be the appropriate approach. You want to be able to have an inspection. If he wants a T, we'll make a T. But it's unusual that you would have a multifamily without a manhole. So, we showed a manhole. Scott suggested that it shouldn't be there. Then I guess we'll have to get Scott and Richard together and decide who's right. We can easily eliminate the manhole if that's what they want.
Oh, because you've got to have a cleanout.
We can't be whipsawed between them.
You got to for cleanout, right.
The reason we have a second manhole, number two, is because there's a change in grade. The property drops significantly across, as we, as we know, there's about 12 feet drop. So, in order to make that drop, you have to do it in a manhole. You can't have a, an abrupt drop. So, we have a sloping manhole, a sloping sewer to a manhole, a drop, and then horizontal out to the main, which we intend to replace. And it's all documented in notes as to how we propose to do it. We just need to get the permit for it, which is typically done after approval of the site plan, so we can finalize all the construction and architectural drawings. That's just the way it's done.
Was it your feeling that, from, from the discussions, or did anybody discuss these memos with, with Rich? So, based upon your reading of these memos, is it your opinion that he would be comfortable if we approved this tonight with conditions, or is it your feeling that he wants this, he wants to take a crack at it before we decide?
I will, I think with all of these things, his issue is, he wants to make sure that he, the things that he wants, that the applicant is going to agree to. That's why he's saying that he wants it to be handled at this stage, because he wants to ensure that there's no problem.
I gave, I gave an A, B, C.
His answer was, he wants it before final site plan approval by us. That's what I clarified with Patrick this evening. I wrote back to Patrick, and I said, "I don't understand what he means by the P and Z stage." And Patrick answered me, "He wants it before we do the final site plan approval."
Right. And I'm, and I'm saying that the reason that he wants all of those things, and having dealt with him on many of these types of scenarios, is because he wants to ensure he has leverage, because obviously the applicant is trying to get the approval. So, in order to get the approval, the plan needs to be at, to the satisfaction of Mr. Feminella. So, it's easier for him, of course, to have a B through this commission, and, and for him to be able to work with the applicant. To your point, you've just gone through all of the series of, of issues that Mr. Feminella has raised, and the applicant stated on the record that they-
They will do it.
That they feel they can satisfy whichever scenario Mr. Feminella wants them to go with.
Right.
That still leaves me with the issue that I raised on a different application at the last meeting, which is that we're working very hard to make this commission be consistent and predictable in the way we make our decisions. And as Mr. Tessie himself said, he doesn't recall us approving an application prior to sewer sign-off recently. Well, you would be correct.
Sorry, that's not what I said.
Well, you would be correct if you had said that, because you, you would be right, because I, I go-
Sewer never sign, let's be clear. Sewer never quote signs off. What sewer does is list a bunch of conditions which require a lot of investigation-
Right.
-every time.
Yes.
And, and at the end of the day, what you say is that we have to satisfy those sewer conditions. That's what I said. And, and the fact that Rich unfortunately said, "Well, I want it," he used the phrase, "dealt with at this time," to me meant, we never, we never agreed to the conditions. Essentially, that's what Katie's saying. So, we're saying for the record, "Look, we'll agree to the conditions." And I was adding the other point, that if, if there's some concern, as expressed by you, that this is the leverage point of the case, that the leverage point is for you to condition the zoning permit-
Right.
-on a sewer permit.
But to your-
Which is the way it should be all the time, far as I'm concerned.
Well, that would be, and see, if we were going to consistently apply a different way of approaching this to all applicants, I'd be fine with that. And if that's what my fellow commissioners would want to do, I'd be okay with that. But the truth is, we don't normally give a go-ahead to somebody, given the nature of the comments that we have in front of us at this point. We just don't. And I know we don't, and I've been here for 11 years, and I can tell you that we-
Well-
-I have gone kicking and screaming every time that I've been able to, that we have to be consistent, that you guys have to know that we will observe protocol, and we will do the same thing, so that we're predictable for you, so that we're known, following the rules quantity for you.
If you look back, if you want to look back at the Harbor project, the Monero Parking Lot project.
I was not here for, over the Monero Parking Lot. Okay.
Okay, Monero Parking Lot project, there were a list of conditions, plus we had to move the sewer line. And at the end of the day, it was, it was agreed that basically, because nothing was finalized, but it was agreed with Mr. Feminella.
Procedured.
We agreed, oh, well, we had to do, we had to do flow monitor, monitoring, flow monitor. There was never, there was never an absolute, the reason I'm bringing this up is this, there was never really an absolute that we were going to get a sewer permit. It could have turned out the flow was just so bad, or we had to, that the expense of doing it could have been horrible, and it just wasn't going to get done. But at that, which is why I'm a little perplexed as to why, in this particular instance, he made the comment he made, because that was a much more complicated situation.
I think the situation's gotten worse, and we, we didn't have a consent decree at the time that that, I mean, we did not have the issues with sewer capacity back then that we have now.
Oh, yes, we did. It was, oh, yeah, it was even worse, especially that line. And that line was going through people's backyards.
I know, we did not.
But at the end of the day-
But in any event, coming back to, go ahead, Katie.
I was just going to say, I mean, the, the reason that we get all these comments is, we want to ensure that there's, that the, the plan is far enough along that any detail that needs to be worked out isn't going to create a redesign of a project. So, when you look at the drainage situation, if it's a matter of, of moving the elevation of, of something, that, that's one thing. But if it's something where it's a rain garden versus a coal tech, or something of that magnitude that may end up changing the location of buildings, or, or tree removal, or something that may impact the neighbors, then that's, that's something different. So, therein lies the question for you, is taking all of these comments and trying to figure out how much of them will, or could redesign a project and, and the layout of the site plan. I mean, that's really what you're looking at here. So, what you have to, what you have to determine-
But if that's the standard, I, I think Mr. Tessie did that in the beginning. He said, "It's underground."
It's not going to change the site plan, but that was very good.
I'm fine here.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Does anybody think that if, again, I go to A, B, C, if that six becomes an eight, or the eight becomes a six, I can't conceive of how that would change the layout of this site? Does anybody feel differently about that?
If there's a capacity concern-
Just bear with me a minute. On that-
If there's a capacity concern, and he won't issue a permit for six units, then he's not going to issue a permit.
It quells all those issues that the sewer department may have. And if they're not able to satisfy the sewer department, then obviously they're not going to go forward. So, I don't see-
But they, the thing is, they've willing, they've, they've agreed tonight to do those things. And what I'm saying is, if they, whether it becomes an eight-inch pipe in the street, and it runs for 10 feet, 20 feet, or 90 feet or something, doesn't affect this site plan, doesn't affect the number of units. What would affect the number of units is, in the end, they don't have the flow capacity to handle it, and they would have to come and take a unit away or something. Then they'd have to come back to us with a new site plan.
But that's exactly right. But that's not what we're here to do, and that's not how we, we don't normally say, "Okay, so, we're going to approve this, but then if it doesn't work out, you can come back with a new site plan, because we're not sure it's going to work out." That's not how-
We're not saying that.
We're not saying that. That's just, that's just the default position.
I feel very strongly that we have been super consistent about certain things as much as we can in the last year or so. And I'd like to stay with that, that us be consistent, and that people know what we're going to do, even if they get mad at us when we're doing it. That they can predict us, that if, now, if our process is wrong, and we should approve people even when Rich is raising capacity concerns, then fine. I'm okay with that, as long as we agree that we're going to treat everybody the same way. But I want to treat everybody the same way. That's all I'm saying.
As I said earlier- I have a question for Mr. DeAndre. After your connection of the six units, and I guess it's the Greenwich Hardware Building, is anything else connected to that private sanitary line from there down to Arch Street?
What we, what we know is that the-
Asking how many units are connected to it.
Don't know.
That's what he's asking.
No, that's not what he's asking. What he's asking is, he thinks he has a problem down at the Arch Street. That's not our problem.
He says, "Please tell us how many, how many units are connected."
He knows how many are, are-
Yes.
He should know how many are connected. Let's put it that way.
He asks in the memo, how many units-
He should know how many are connected, because he controls the permits. We don't have that information. We have to go to his records to find out. We can work with him to do that. But the reality of it is, this building, the Hardware Store building is connected. We've also learned that the building to the west here goes out to the west, down through private properties and out, and he's got problems over there. We learned about those on Field Point, 187 and 191 Field Point Road. We didn't have any permits when you approved that. We were going to resolve those, because that sewer went through private property. We would have to fix that. You didn't approve it, you know, contingent upon having a permit in advance. Richard knows that there are problems in the area with the sewer infrastructure. Ultimately, the town has to provide that to us.
What, what I'm reading here on his November-
He doesn't have to provide you six units.
No, sir, that's correct. But we also know that two units is not going to break the, the, the capacity.
That's where you're getting yourself on a tangent. The town does not guarantee you the right to connect six units.
Not six units, but they have, we have to be able to connect to the sewer because of this, because of the zone that's here. Let's just go and focus one more, on one more comment. The practicality of how these things are designed can change a lot. Mr. Feminella is not inclined, I don't believe, to be giving multiple permits for the same project. If we were to have modified the buildings, or changed the way the laterals come out, that's impractical. The permits require all of this to be part of the plan, and we always pursue those after the approval. That's the way it's always been done. We never come there. I just inherited a subdivision today from another consultant. There wasn't a bit of drainage solved. There wasn't a bit of sanitary sewer on it, yet it was approved, and it was done within the last 12 months. And I'll bring you the plan. So, this is typical of what we do. We design the plan, we get the permits, we work with Mr. Feminella to design those things. It's, as Mr. Tessie pointed out on, on the Harbor, that was a major job. At the time, it was 12 units. It was, ended up being 11, I believe. We moved the main, a large main that was going to the pump station. None of that was worked out before we came, before we had the approval.
No, but I wasn't in the commission. Not for that one.
Nothing unusual about this-
For the original Monero.
Mr. DeAndre, as, as I was asking before, the new line, you're coming out, picking up Greenwich Hardware, these six units, and then it's going down the street. Before it hits the main in Arch Street, does it pick anything else up?
We believe that, that the line takes the condominiums to the east of this project.
Okay. And then it continues on?
Right. We don't know, we know that those condos don't all come into this manhole, but they come into the line farther down, to the best of our knowledge.
Okay. Because, reading his November 9th comments- Because, reading his November 9th comments, need to work with the engineer to determine which property owners are connected to the private sanitary sewer lateral, and confirm the sanitary sewer up to the connection, up to the connection in Arch Street has sufficient capacity. If that, the, the private sanitary sewer does not have enough capacity for everything that's hooked to it, if it actually includes those others, would the applicant be prepared to actually repair that to Mr. Feminella's satisfaction?
I think that, this is, that's a variation of what we said earlier. If he's going to require an increase from the six-inch, right, the eight-inch.
Six-inch, eight-inch, I don't want to talk about details.
No, the answer is.
I'm talking about from Greenwich Hardware all the way down to Arch Street. If he says, replace the whole thing.
We said earlier.
You're going to do that?
We have no choice.
That was, that was B in the choices.
That's the point. We've already agreed to that. We have no choice.
All the way down? That, that would resolve it? Okay.
We have to work with Mr. Feminella. At the end of the day, the DPW, Mr. Feminella, if we, sometimes we, he, he'll say, can we have a larger discussion of the issue? See, I, I use memo to say, as I, as I quoted earlier, I take seriously what he wrote. He wrote, we have to discuss how we're going to have this prop, these properties served by a sanitary sewer main. And that's what it's all about. And my view is what, the same view you have as you read it, he's concerned about capacity. The capacity is not in the main on Arch Street. It's about the capacity of the main.
From Greenwich Hardware down.
Within Railroad Avenue to get to Arch Street, because it's only six inches.
And we're okay if he says, replace the whole thing?
Well, we prefer, he wouldn't say that, because it's going to cost our client money, but I don't, but it's his, his call, and that's what we're expecting.
He's not going to take an eight-inch main across the front of your property, and then go back to the six-inch in the street.
He's going to require an eight, and he said, by the way, he's going to say, keep on going. I agree. We're all saying the same thing. We all agree. That's most likely what he's going to say. If he doesn't, that's his call. That's how I'm reading.
That was C.
That was C. And, plus, anything else, I think was C.
All of the above.
Right. And you could think of something between now and then, by the way, because it's all a function of what he requires to have a permit issued, whatever he wrote, whatever he wrote to you.
I think you just have to.
And the final point, you know, Ms. Allen, the real problem is, there's no way, in the next two weeks, that we can get done, all, Tony will say this, schedule and get done, because actually, he wants, I think there's something in there, but he wants an observer there. My only point is simply this.
But we do that all the time. I mean, let's just hold on a second, because we do that all the time. We approve you before the close, the closed inspection. We do approve, I mean, he, he's, he's got a whole bunch of boilerplate conditions about the CCTV, and blah, 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 and that we approve on. But when he raises certain types of concerns, that's our red flag, and I'm really stuck on that.
Okay, well, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be at the death anymore.
He says, I have a downstream capacity concern, I'm a red flag, and that's it.
He didn't say downstream capacity.
He does.
He said, he could pass.
In the email today, he's there is, Mandras writes, there is a downstream capacity, this is a tricky location, and there is a downstream capacity concern.
Correct. And that, down, and as they explained more in the memo.
And then he comes back, and he answers, and he says, he wants this addressed prior to P and Z fine approval. Now, when he says something like that, I always.
What does he mean by addressed? What, what do you think he means?
Well, normally, he leaves a whole lot of boilerplate things that can't, you know, the CCTV, and blah, blah, blah. But he says, we've discussed this with the applicant, the kind of memo we get from him is, we've reviewed this with the applicant, and this is how it's going to be fixed, and we're good to go, based on a plan that's ahead of us. And that's what we normally do. And that's what he's looking for, that's what he asked us for late this afternoon, and I'm.
No, he said he didn't have the memo.
No, no, keep going.
I'm, I'm reading it.
No, and then go up one, and then.
It says he doesn't have.
And then he goes back further up from Patrick, it says, I would prefer to address, have this addressed during the P and Z review, or during the P and Z stage, which is what Patrick was clarifying. And my point is, when he says that, I feel strongly about respecting it. That's the precedent and the consistency that I strive for. You guys don't agree, I'm good, but I feel very strongly about that, and I'm stuck on it.
Could you convert to preliminary? Obviously, we have to.
Absolutely not.
Do anything.
Absolutely, absolutely not. There's not even, there's not even.
I understand you have a issue.
No, Mr. Orlando will lose tens of thousands of dollars. It's not happening. This is, we spend way too much time on this. You decided what you want to do. Miss, we're entitled to rely upon what Mr., what Mr., what Mr. Feminella wrote down. It made total sense, everything he said, and we have agreed to everything, knowing it's going to be, he's going to have to spend more money, our client, because we're going to have to replace that. And I think it's crystal clear, as pointed out by Mr. McCary, and acknowledged by Mr. Maitland, and Mr. Levy, that the capacity issue, and Mr. Fox, has to do with the private line, that, that's downstream, that's going down to Arch Street. That's the downstream he's talking about. We're certainly not for two units going to replace the main in Arch Street. He's never going to require that. And he specifically said it, said, as I said earlier, he's talking about discussions about how we're going to handle this, and we basically said, see, anything you want.
Okay. I mean, I, you may not have a problem.
I think we're ready here.
Yeah, we're done. I'm done. I mean, you know how I feel.
I know.
I know how you guys feel, it's good.
Okay.
Anybody, any other questions from the commission? Any questions from the public? Okay, is it the desire of the commission to close this now?
Yes.
Well, that would be the problem, because I wouldn't want to close it, but I think you're going to have to go against one commissioner in this, because I think everybody else wants to close.
Dennis is, Dennis is.
Dennis is seated.
I want to close. For who?
For Peter.
For the, for the vacated. Well, it was actually for the vacated seat, before Mr. McCary came.
Victoria and Dennis were both seated on this, as I remember, aren't they?
No.
No, just Miss Yoski.
I missed that. I'm sorry. Close, close.
I think you have.
Peter, close. Close.
I think you're going to have to go ahead and close.
We're closing.
Let's just go back and see this, just if I got it right. Okay, so, we'll close it.
Didn't we combine the records?
We combined the records.
Yes.
We're going to do a policy now.
Shall I begin?
Oh, let me just introduce you.
Oh, okay.
Item is number 11. Network Development Company.
Did you, guys, you didn't ask about your wall on the last one.
It's, it's done, it's closed.
The wall, okay. You wanted to ask if AIDRC had looked at the treatment on the wall, I forgot to remind you.
Yes, they, as a matter of fact, they have. If you read their memo, they have, they have commented.
I just had a note from yesterday, and I just want to make sure that Nick got his question answered.
Well, I don't want, I don't want this going in the record.
I was just going to say, this part is not on the record, because you have, you've closed the item.
No, that. I just, can I still answer her question?
No, no, leave it, it's fine. I didn't ask it.
Not, and.
Follow the rules.
Okay, we're now ready for number 11.
The 66 and 68 Halsey Drive.
Can we change it, Tony?
Okay, on this one, the regulars are seated.
The regulars?
The regulars.
Okay, for the record, my name is John Tessie, representing the, the applicant Network Development Co. LLC. Mr. DeAndrea, again, is here with me. And in this application, we have a continuation of the commission's first hearing on, on it back on January 10th. At that meeting, the application was left open to address, essentially, one, primarily one specific issue of the commission, which had to do with the open, the proposed new open space area. As I believe you all recall, the application before you is to modify, technically, is to modify an existing approved four-lot subdivision of the subject property by reducing the number of lots from four to two, as shown on this marked-up development plan prepared by Mr. DeAndrea. During our, our, our original application, provided for an open space area on the, the left, okay, thank you, Tony, I don't know where that one was, but it's, it's, okay. That application provided for, I don't think that's, that's, okay. That application, as previously submitted, was to modify the open space area, which was of record on the four-lot plan, four-lot plan subdivision, or record sheet, and provide for a bifurcated open space, that totaled 15%. Commission members, somewhat strongly, advised us that that was not going to work. There were comments also from our conservation director's office, and we consulted with our client, and Mr. DeAndrea came out with, developed another plan, which is acceptable to our client, of incorporating this whole west side of the proposed driveway into an expanded open space area, which happens to equal a little over 20%. And then there were, per discussions with commission members regarding the north, and I'm sorry, not the north, but the, the east side of the open space area, we proposed to make that area almost entirely a conservation easement area. So, we got up in terms of total percentages to essentially ballpark of where you were back on the four-lot plan. The Wetlands Agency Director, Pat Sesta, in, in comments that I think you all have, but I'm not sure, because I don't know, but in comments back and forth with Mr. LaRoe, pointed out that the, the protected area on this left side here, again, the, which is, I'm getting things backwards, that's, yeah, that's east. East side would be, has to have the same amount of protected area. From her point of view, and if not, she would have the, she would state that it's not consistent with the permit that was issued, and we would, our client would have to reapply for a modification to, to the Wetlands Agency, which may or may not look favorably upon it, but certainly was favorable, was the expanded open space area, particularly since we have a wetland area. We spoke to our client, and knowing that this area actually was protected anyway, because of the proximity of the Wetlands and ordinary buffer, in fact, it is Wetlands, client agreed that we can accept the modification of this plan as a condition, and make this entire area conservation easement area. And in doing that, we essentially are adhering, are proposing to you exactly what you tell us to come back with. All conservation easement here, which would be part of the rear lot, which is 68, and open space along the right side of the, of, of the driveway, leading to 68.
You're willing to do that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just to make sure, Pat, that is the triangle that she was referring to?
Correct.
Okay.
Up here.
It's not quite a triangle, but it's.
Uh, yeah, it's a triangle, actually.
No, it's not, actually. The wet, well, that area will be, yes, but the Wetlands.
Yeah, but it's a triangle she was referring to.
Because that was where the line was.
Yeah.
And they had to put it back.
Yeah, yeah, we should have probably just included.
Something very small, because it, there's a, in the original one, there was a teeny little triangle up there at the top, way at the top of the, of the triangle, there's another one that's outside the line of the Wetlands.
Oh, up there, okay. Okay, so, I think we're all in agreement. There was one, I do have to clarify one point, and that has to do with, with the, with these proposed removal of the, the two trees, one in the town right of way, at the entrance, at the intersection with Halsey Drive, and that was raised by.
Well, the specific one is the one that's in the town right of way. The other one, we can't, we, we'd like you to keep.
Our, our client actually does not want to remove those trees. Mr. DeAndrea, being the engineer, and being concerned about space, spatial issues, felt that they may have to go, but our client does not want to lose the trees, actually, and wants to make every effort to keep them. So, we can specifically provide that. Our client's intent is not to remove the trees. If, if, if they're in construction, it becomes an issue. I think when we did the, Tony, it was a subdivision, remember, we worked on Lockwood? There was some, there was some language in there about going, that if you were going to be removing trees, you have to work with staff. We had some language from the Lockwood decision, remember? That could be the right decision in this instance, too, on that. I'm just thinking of.
Those were the trees in the, three trees, those were trees in the open space, in the right of way?
No. Town right.
Well, town right of way, the tree warden has to approve it. We all know that. I'm just saying, there was language there, so the tree warden probably covers that. I, anyway, this one here that's on our property, if you feel concerned about it, I'm saying we can, we, we can.
Well, I would say that you'll just modify, I mean, the subdivision map that you're going to submit on this is, was, doesn't say anything about trees.
No, wait, and it'll, it'll, this is the subdivision map itself, actually, not the development. This would be the map that's recorded in the land records.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it doesn't show trees, so.
No, it doesn't. They typically don't. Yeah.
The thing about those two trees is that if you don't, I mean, you can't have concrete trucks and everything rolling by those two trees. You're going to have to get some sort of a construction road north of, or top, which way north is on this sheet, I don't know.
Yeah, north is on top.
Well, anyway, along, along, what's the name of the road? Halsey?
Halsey Drive.
Along Halsey, you're probably going to, you don't want to, I mean, if you've got trucks going over those roots, you're going to kill the trees anyway, so there's, has to be some way to, to, who's going to be built first? The one on the top, or the one on the bottom?
The beauty is, the drivers are there already.
I know that, but the thing is.
They're there already, but.
You know that if you have a lot of truck capacity over those tire, those roots, they're going to, so how do you do that?
Well, that was Mr. DeAndrea's concern, but let, let him take over.
Tony DeAndrea, just for the record, I, I tried to anticipate that there might be a problem. I proposed that the trees be removed. The client said, Tony, I don't really want to remove them. I said, it's better to have a dialogue now. If the commission wants to make a condition that you don't remove them, fine, we've had a dialogue. But I, I just wanted to let it be known that I have considered it. There may be a problem, I'd rather let you know about it in advance, so we can decide if it's appropriate or not. So, the answer is, the client doesn't want to remove them.
Okay, so we'll.
Do everything we can to prevent that destruction.
Well, I just don't think those roads should be used for the construction traffic.
So, they can move the construction access to the west on the front lot, and the other lot, it has the driveway there, and there's really no place else to put it.
Can you really do that?
I don't know why not. As long as you don't build the bottom one first and sell it through somebody's yard.
Well, I think he's looking to, I think he's looking to sell that. Well, I think he's looking to, I think he's looking to sell that.
Yes, but it is a construct, I'll make a plan that has the...
Just has a construction easement across...
I hate to commit to that.
John, all I have to do is just agree that the construction access can be west of the existing driveway.
It's fine.
We're talking about for lot 66. We're only talking about the front lot. Yeah, we can't talk about the rear lot. That's only for the front lot. We cannot bring the construction access to the rear lot through this, through this front.
You can't?
No. That's going to be sold. Our client wants to build his home here and sell this.
But the sequence is...
I can't control the sequence. They're separate properties. That's why we have them separate.
Then how you, will you be able to, I mean, I'm just curious, the tree that's in town right of way?
It's going to stay. The driver is already there.
Got to speak into the microphone.
Sorry, on the record.
What he, what he said is that, the client, the client's adamant, he wants to try to save the trees. That's the irony. I don't, that's usually not the case with most clients.
Yeah, well, we like tree hugging.
So, he's going to make all reasonable efforts, reasonable efforts to preserve the trees. That's what he wants to do.
Okay. I don't know if we can condition this, I don't, that note can't be on a subdivision map, so...
Well, we don't have to worry about it.
Well, just make it, I guess it could just be a part of our findings.
Yeah, and we don't have the right of way to one to worry about.
If he kills the tree, the tree warden will be after him, so...
Right.
Because it's in the town right of way.
Yeah.
There's a, the habitat enhancement plan that was in our packages.
Yes, by Matt Pop?
Mr. Matt, do you mind if I just stay on this issue for just a second?
Absolutely.
If it's, if it's a town, if it's in the town right of way, then you can require protection around it, or something more than just, we'll try not to knock it down, kind of thing, and...
Yeah, which we're happy with. He will put up appropriate tree protection and make every reasonable effort to sustain a tree. That's fine.
Well, I think it has to be a bit more than that if it's a town tree. It can't just be a reasonable effort. It has to be a commitment.
No, I said, he will make preservation efforts.
It is a town tree, so...
In coordination with the town tree warden, would that be acceptable?
Coordination with the town tree warden, but I don't, but, you know, I just don't want to make it so absolute that the man cannot build, get, build his home.
Well, if, if he needs to remove the tree for a reason, then he obviously has to go through the tree warden, so that's my, that's the only point I'm making, that he, it needs to be stated so. It can't just be every, every effort will be made.
The town tree warden, I'm not sure exactly how to word it at this point, but I think it's an acknowledgement or a, or a, we're asked by you that that tree is in, is in the town, is in the town right of way, and, and effort should be made, appropriate protection efforts should be made to try to save it, and that...
Well, can we condition it this way, that there will be, there will be no zoning permit issued until that tree has been discussed with the town tree warden?
Well, every effort will be made to save the tree if there's, it's understood that this is a town tree, and therefore it's subject to the rules and regulations of town trees, meaning that if there's some issue with the tree, it has to go before the, through the town tree warden process.
Yeah, that's basically...
Do we, are there highway permits for those two driveways?
Yeah.
They would have to be applied for.
So, during the highway permit, that tree will also become an issue?
A factor, yeah. Again, we have layers of permits.
Right, because you might have to move that one driveway further away from the tree.
Well, there's really no room to move it.
Well, you could move it.
Move it a couple of feet, maybe, but...
One of the beauties of not combining the two driveways, by the way, is we have a shot at preserving both trees. Obviously, if they were combined, one tree was going to go. And the client wants to keep it. We're all of the same mind, I just don't want to put the man in a position that he, you know, can't, he can't build.
But we do have a plan that actually proposes two replacements.
It does, because that was, because that plan that was proposed was based upon Mr. DeAndrea's plan that the client didn't know about, and Mr. DeAndrea proposed to remove the trees.
So, then the habitat plan that I'm looking at, the enhancement plan here, I should disregard those two trees that...
Well, we're just saying that that's what happened. The client did not want them removed. Mr. Kenny, I think, did that plan, Mr. Kenny worked off through Mrs. DeAndrea's plan.
Right.
The client didn't focus in on it and said, "What are you doing? I don't want to remove the trees." So, that plan needs to be modified.
To not show the two trees?
Mr. Tessie?
Well, that's what you...
Mr. Tessie?
So, yours, I'm sorry.
Those are saved.
Oh, those are saved, I'm sorry.
Those are the, those are the existing trees?
Those are the existing trees. So, he is proposing to save them. I take it back. You're leading me down the wrong road, Mr. Matt.
It's, doesn't say that on the plan, it just says that, that's proposed.
Oh, I see, but you're saying these are the existing, no, Tony. How could it be the existing tree when the tree's shown to be inside the right of way? Inside the property line.
The existing trees are shown one way.
Okay, whatever it is, he wants to make the effort to remove the tree. I, it doesn't matter whether these are existing or not.
Tree he's drawn here is inside the property.
I know, that can't be the same tree. The other one could be, but I'm not sure.
The other one could be an existing tree, but he's drawn it, he says a 20-inch oak.
Hey, we've got agreement, you guys, that any town, any trees in the town right of way are going to be preserved, protection to be provided in coordination with the town tree warden, and any action to be taken will be approved by the tree warden, full stop. We don't have to talk about where they all are.
That was, I couldn't agree with, pros any better.
I still don't agree with any of the other things.
Okay.
But we're agreed, we don't have to rabbit all the time.
Just the next, next sentence?
Yeah.
If the trees have to go, do we want to have something put back in?
Any action will have to be approved by the town tree warden. If they want to take it down, the tree warden's going to take them, tell them what to do.
Ms. Alvin, can you put your microphone on, please?
Sorry, I'm shouting, so I thought I was doing good.
Okay, so, okay. So, and again, the other condition, of course, was that we will add the triangle.
Could you also flip back to the, to the subdivision map? I know it's, it seems like a small issue, but to the right there, you'll see sort of a ghosted thing that says the P2 open space.
You need to get that out.
No, to your right. Keep, right, up to the right, a little bit more, there.
That's a left, that's a leftover.
Could you get it out? It's just kind of confusing.
Yeah.
I know why it's there, but it's just confused.
Excuse me, go ahead, I'm sorry.
For the record, we left on, shadowed in the old lot, so that you could see, you could see what was there once before. That was P2 open space. This map was a re-subdivision, so I wanted to let you know where the other lots were. That's why it's there. It will come off the other lot of the map.
Well, we're going to tell you two anyway.
Just take it off the subdivision.
What we're going to do, Mr. Maitland, just for everybody to understand, we're going to take off, then, all the shadowed lines.
Right.
Right, so all you're going to see is the final lots, but this plan was presented so you could see how we got to here.
Would you also, in your notes section up there, put in a, sort of a history of this site, like...
What was the other prior approvals?
Right. This supersedes all of those prior approvals.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
There's only one official.
Whatever, but the, well, no, I think we approved two. We approved the four lot and the three lot settlement.
You did, but the other one, the record sheet was never signed, so it died.
I don't...
I think it would confuse matters by referring to something that never be...
I'm going to just say it.
I don't, I'm not going to be...
But it was submitted.
I don't have to ask it, do I?
I understand, but people are going to look for it, and there's no, no record on it, so it's not going to make a lot.
It's in there already.
There's nothing filed. It's just going to confuse matters.
Katie, are you happy with that, that since the one map, the one approval they got, they never filed the map, and so therefore it just disappeared? So, the one that they did file was for the settlement.
But was, was there a suit taken on that first, was it the first subdivision? So, the settlement was...
Let me explain this.
So, the notes, you're going to add notes on it that show the approval that you didn't just let lapse, but the approval that was existent prior to this.
That's what, that's what Note 1 does. It refers to the prior one, 8180, which was the official map. Just to clear, just to answer your question, there was never an appeal taken of the subdivision. What happened was, it was an issue, it was a lawsuit over the, what we call a declaration, an action for a declaratory judgment that the deed restriction was inapplicable, that the prior only lost.
Does that explain to Note 1?
No, Note 1 simply states that the purpose of this, this plan is to modify the approved subdivision, 8180, that's on record.
Yep.
I think that's all you want to do.
That's the only one that's on there.
Right.
So, that's fine.
But this commission reviewed the plan that was the result of that private...
But they also filed, they also filed a map to sort of memorialize that settlement.
What, no, 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 let me clarify this for the record, since we're talking to the record. There was, what happened is, the client made an application, I represented in that action, to, to come up with a three lot plan, a re-subdivision, to have three lots rather than four, consistent with a negotiation he was having with the neighborhood association and neighbors in that lawsuit.
Yeah.
They never, he kind of jumped the gun, because what happened is, they never were able to finalize their negotiations. So, the court, so the court ultimately found in favor of the neighborhood and said that we, we, we find that the restrictions were, in fact, still valid restrictions to this property. With that happening, that client sold the property to the current owner and left Dodge.
No, but there was a map, 8180, that showed the three lots.
Four lots.
Four lots.
No, four lots.
Right.
That was approved by this commission. There were no appeals, that was approved. A declaration of restrictions and the subdivision map were both filed in the Greenwich Land Records.
Right.
Those are the two documents, one a map, one a declaration, because that had a different configuration of the open space. And now, that we've come here to modify, we are going to add to that declaration of restrict, we're modifying the declaration of restrictions, working with the law department and the town planner's office, and we're also going to add a conservation easement document, which would be a separate document to cover the area on the, on the top here.
Right.
That's the actual process we're following.
Right.
I think Katie gets it and Pat gets it, so if you just defer to them, we'll be fine.
All I know is there is a map filed, 8180.
And we absolutely all agree, and that's the only map filed, and it was a legal subdivision.
The 8180 and Note Number 1 that you're...
We specifically say the purpose is to modify, so I think we're covered. Which was Mr. DeAndrea's point.
I get it. So, when you sent this map in, I just, just to confirm it, I think what I'm going to say is true, but the, you showed some sketch layouts, or the earlier subdivision layout...
For lot, the 8180 map is what's the undertone there.
No, 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 for this one, you showed like a site plan for the hill, for the house on top and that. Those still apply, because you never resubmitted that drawing.
Those are good.
Those are good. Those are also, there are permits issued by the wetlands agency for those developments also.
Okay. All right. All right, well, we're going to try to save that tree.
There's a whole bunch of staff rooms in one of them.
Yeah, we'll just roll those in. Any other commission comments? Any comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Francia Alvarez, and I just wanted to go back to the town trees again. So, the question that I had is, the tree to the left of the one that is originally considered a town tree, there's some confusion because of the latest GIS map that shows that it is a town tree, and the older map that Tony had used that shows that it wasn't a town tree. So, I would request that the tree warden go out and take a look at that other tree and determine whether or not it is a town tree or not, because then that would fall into a different classification as to how it's handled. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
My apologies. One other thing is that I, my understanding was that, according to the town code, that any tree six inches and above is supposed to be on a map, a site plan map, and the trees that are on this map that has been filed is for 12 inches and above. So, that would mean that all the trees between six and 12 inches are not on the site plan, and that would mean that there could be a lot more tree loss on the property than what is accounted for here in the site plan. So, I'd wonder why...
Right, it's because it's a subdivision.
So, it doesn't have to be in a subdivision?
Are they not required to show it all on...
A 10-inch caliper is the requirement in the subdivision regulations.
So, and they're only showing 12, 12 is what Mrs. Alvarez is saying?
Well, I guess the question to the applicant would be, are all trees 10-inch caliber above being shown?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to ask.
My name is Richard Wolfram. I live at 64 Halsey. I live on the house just to the west, the one that is contiguous to what is now about to be called conservation easement. But I have a question. Are we going to get an answer to the 10-inch question?
Um, we're, yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll ask the applicant.
Right, I mean, I was...
We usually let him listen to all the questions and respond at the end.
Right, okay. So, I just have a, thanks to Pat for clarifying things, but I think I'm still a little bit in the fog. So, an ease, a document has to be filed, as I understand.
Mr. Wolfram, can you, can you speak directly to the...
Changing the designation, sorry, changing the designation of that, I'm going to step over here.
You can take it, take it right out and take it with you. There we go.
Right. Okay, so, so I live right here. That's Halsey, 64 is here. So, here's this, here's the front lot, so conservation, right here, conservation easement. Before, am I correct, it was called an open space?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the significance of its being changed to the characterization as a conservation easement legally?
Legally, it's, it's, it's a matter of whether the lot, if it was called open space, that must be transferred out to an ownership that, by fee. If it's a conservation easement, it remains the property of the lot, the 68, in this particular case, to be used for FAR purposes.
Right, okay.
But the development that can go in there is conditioned, obviously, on wetlands and what their conditions are, and it's also conditioned further by a conservation easement, that they can't go in there and, and build and use it and so forth.
So, nothing can be done on it?
In terms of a building, nothing can be done in there in terms of a building. There'll be some, we have some plans already from, I think wetlands already had their approval on what you could do with the trees there, and then the, we also have a planting plan that was submitted as a part of this presentation, that's just showing that there's, if you can read that, there's a considerable number of trees being going in there next to your property.
Okay, great. So, when you say transfer to a different fee ownership, what...
This open space...
If it were done that way? If it had remained as open space and to be transferred to a separate fee, I don't quite, to whom?
No, the, the one that's shown in dark green.
Right, well, that, yeah, that's...
That's open space, that will go to, probably to a homeowners association, I don't know, we'll get the name from the applicant in a minute.
Oh, really? Oh, well, that's...
That's out. That, that can't be used for FAR purposes or anything.
Oh, so then, that's what was going to happen with this, but not anymore?
Not anymore.
I see. I guess it would have been the Haven Meyer Park Owners Association.
No.
No, it will be an ownership, because it's all part of this parcel, so it'll be to the...
All right, something created.
Well, it'll either create a homeowners association, or I don't think there's any other, if it was contiguous to a Greenwich Land Trust or something like that, it would probably transferred to them.
Okay.
But it's not.
Okay, all right, so, thanks. Just as a matter of clarification to what Mr. Tessie said, the lawsuit was actually by the two contiguous landowners, my neighbor and myself.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Tessie, you want to summarize, or do you want to get in, talk to us about the trees and what's shown on the survey?
Oh, they've grown.
That's pretty funny.
When the original, right, Mr. DeAndrea, and the original subdivision map, original approval did locate all the 10-inch trees, and a lot of time has gone by, and maybe some have grown, he said.
Well, if they were located, if they've grown, they're only bigger, so then that would confirm with the 10 inches or more.
Right, so, basically, all of his work dates back to the original subdivision approval, and they were 10 inches or more.
No, but did he show all 10-inch trees?
Yes. So, he showed all 10-inch trees.
Yes.
That's what he's representing. Right, right. Just on the conservation easement, just to clarify one point, what you said is correct, That's what he's representing? Right, right. Just on the Conservation Easement, just to clarify one point, what you said is correct, the beneficiary of the Conservation Easement actually is the homeowners association too. That's who the easement runs to, that's what we typically do on the towns' forms, so...
On the, in section six dash two ninety-six of the subdivision regulations, it does state that the developers shall leave not less than two naturally growing trees with a trunk diameter of not, of not less than two inches in the front yard of each lot, or shall plant two trees with trunk diameter of not less than two inches in the front yard of each lot. So, can you confirm that, that you're meeting that condition?
Yes, we accept that as conditions, a requirement, right.
Right, that's the requirement in the subdivision regulations.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, what you're saying is there'll be, and the name should be, the name of who you're gonna transfer those owners should be on this map?
Well, we ordinarily do, Mr. DeAndrea does, the client chooses the name of his homeowners association, and he'll put...
Whatever you, whatever is it, whatever's gonna be in your written declarations...
Record sheet will say...
Needs to be shown on this map.
Like sixty-six, sixty-eight, Halsey Homeowners Association, whatever he wants to call it. Yes, that will, that's what the practice has been recently.
But I want, the name will be on...
That's what you've been requiring, and that's what we've been doing.
What I didn't know and realize is, you're telling me that the Conservation Easement will also be in, to the homeowners association?
The beneficiary, in other words, when you grant an easement, there's an easement holder.
I see.
The easement holder is the association.
Okay.
That's the way we've always done it.
But the fee, the underlying fee for the property is still to sixty-eight?
Yes, that is correct.
Is, is there one declaration of restrictions for both pieces, or will there be one for the open, to the fee?
We typically do, here, it's not a bifurcated situation in terms of open space, there's one that's open space, which is on the east, I don't know why I kept saying the west, the P-one. The Conservation Easement, we typically do a separate document, we did one most recently when Round Hill Road, we just had one approve two lots, had both fee and Conservation Easements, and we submitted to you, and you accepted, and we recorded, a Conservation Easement for the conservation land running to the, to the association, and a fee ownership declaration of restrictions running to the association. We just recently did it for two ninety-four Round Hill, and that's what I'm used to seeing and doing, working with staff. So, we'll be submitting, as I said earlier, two documents, one will be a modification of the existing document, changing Schedule A to leak, you know, incorporating the new plan, so that's a modification.
Is there a problem to do it as one document?
Yeah, because one's an easement, and the other one is a transfer of ownership. That's the way you've, you've done it. I mean, we can get creative, but that seems to work.
Would they cross-reference each other, or does that complicate things?
Typically, in the forms that you've, you've approved, we don't, we don't cross-reference, they're cross-referenced by way of reference to the specific conditions of the subdivision map. That's how they're linked. If you wanna cross-reference, we can put it in, could be a good idea.
Well, I think, I think since both of the documents will refer to the filed map...
Yeah.
One would, by the natural course, identify that there's something else on the file.
Yeah, it's the first time it's come up, but that's probably a good idea, fine.
There, there are ten issues and recommendations from the staff in this report, do you have any problem with any of them, if it just gets incorporated in the... Saving some time, hopefully.
I was just gonna put them in.
Let's see if they got a problem with them first.
You know, the, the...
Well, you've done, IWWA has addressed number one.
Yeah.
By, by way of communication with Mr. LaRoe.
This will be a re-subdivision.
It's a re-subdivision, clearly.
Yeah.
Title search, we had the, we provided the prior information, I don't know if you need anything more. These aren't really, these are really kind of like issues.
Well, it's the basic stuff.
Underground utilities, basic stuff. Question should determine if two driveways make sense.
I don't, we've, we've, well, I, I don't feel that they should be separated, I think they, I'm sure you'll want them separate.
Yeah, they are, and that helps save the trees, if they weren't, then the tree would have to go. Declaration of restrictions approved by the Health Department, not the Health Department, that the Law Department, Conservation, prepared a record sheet with the, with these notes. We agree with A, B. C is typical, D, pre-blast, that's typical. E, measures. I think they're already there, I did see them, yeah, those are all the notes you want, so, yeah, no, there's nothing there.
Okay.
Some are rarely for you to consider, but all the required notes are, have been acceptable right along. I don't see anything new.
All right.
Thank you.
And, do you wanna close this?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Francia Alvarez, so, Tony just said that the ten-inch trees that were originally mapped twelve years ago, ten years ago, have grown to twelve inches, and that is why it shows twelve-inch trees on the maps. What happened to the trees that were eight inches, have they grown to ten, and should they now be on the maps? I just think that there's, there's some discrepancy with what's actually on the property, and so that's why I keep bringing this up, thank you.
Where is the requirement, Pat, for ten-inch trees to be shown?
Section six dash two sixty-six, number ten, states, existing features such as buildings, stone walls, wooded areas, rock outcrops, isolated trees of ten inches in caliber or more, and other such other trees as may be significant to the property or other similar items.
Yeah, we're gonna just condition it, we're gonna say they have to do that.
But how, why is that in subdivision?
Well, 'cause the, the commission has the authority to protect the trees under the subdivision regulations, so, they, they... I believe that the, the thought into creating that language is that those trees be shown, and then the commission can make a determination.
No, but they're never shown on the map that gets recorded, so how would that be recorded on a, on a map? What would you say about that, I've never seen it save this tree on a subdivision map.
Well, that, that would be your decision, we have done that in, in the past, we've saved...
Subdivision?
Sure.
And I think it's...
Like, I think I want an old orchard that we saved, and it's the layout...
Good one that we were just referring to also.
It's, it's under the layout section, so it's essentially the, the development plans that, that require those to be shown, it's not, it would not be on the recorded map unless you protect it.
That's what I'm saying.
And then one of, one of the other, other issues under, under Division seven, the preservation of land, when you are determining where the best location is for open space, where the development envelopes are...
I'm saying that's done.
Right, well, I'm pointing out, the answer to your question is, why, why do you want to know those things on the plan? What are the other existing features, so I think that helps you when you're deciding what are the, what are the best locations for open space and the development of the lots, that's why you want that kind of information shown.
But on the map, but on the subdivision map itself, that won't be shown.
Oh, right.
Okay, so that's just to guide us?
Correct, and you're making your decision.
I would also note that there is an upland review area that encumbers much of these lots.
A what?
An upland review area from the IWWA, that encumbers a lot, much of this lot, and I believe tree removal is, is subject to them to an extent in those areas.
They, they are sensitive to that, and they, both these development plans, as I said earlier, have obtained permits and were thoroughly reviewed by staff. I mean, Tony's best knowledge, you know, there really is nothing else other than what he's showing on the property, so I think it's kind of overkill at this point to have a client pay for him to go out and find a couple of trees, and it's not gonna serve any purpose.
I think, I think what I was trying to get from staff is what's the purpose of it, since what you're here for tonight, and what we ask you to do is, is, we realize that what you're showing here on the map for the, the site plans may not be that in the end.
It's pretty close, Tony actually spent a lot of time with, with the owner on that particular site plan.
I understand, but it coincidentally is where the house is now, in a way, and so, both locations are where they...
That's what the client wanted.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, if you're selling the one downstairs, the one at the, on, on Halsey, you don't know where that's gonna go exactly.
However, let me just make this clear, if there's a material change to the conceptual location for those, for those, either of those lots, given the proximity of the wetlands, the wetlands director will have to make a determination whether she can approve it or whether it's going back to the wetlands, so you really have a situation here where the wetlands are really, agencies really under, you know, in control, as Mr. LaRoe pointed out, 'cause everything's within a hundred feet of a wetland, so, you do have that additional protection. I mean, a hundred, yeah, I said it right, a hundred feet of the wetland.
I, I'd also just like to point out for everybody in the audience too, is that the, there will be wetlands permits for the development of each of these lots, correct?
Correct, that's what I said earlier, we have them.
Well, you have conceptual approval for the division...
No, 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 it's, actual, and Pat noted it in her memo to you, she specifically stated permits have been issued. She stated that in her memo.
So, that is for the development, so these, these are not...
Of each lot, there are two permits, one for each lot.
So, the, the coverages and the, the impacts on the wetlands has been evaluated on these plans, and this is what's gonna be submitted?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I want clarify, I...
No, it's good, it'll be clarified that, I didn't realize you didn't know that.
And Pat's discussion with me, so I just wanna make sure that that's...
Yeah, and she refers to permits, not conceptual approval in her memo to you.
When, when is this gonna end?
I mean, this is getting ridiculous, he's been up three times, he, he should keep getting up...
Bear with us one more time.
Well, I think at the end of the day, the way it works, the applicant finishes.
You can have the last word, as always.
I apologize, I think it's the second time, and I, I do have a serious interest, this is a twelve-year-long saga. I live right next door, I just wanted to emphasize because of the point that was just made, because I'm somewhat uncertain about the continuing scrutiny of the effects on the wetlands. It's not just soggy, mushy ground, it's this stream, this stream, I just want everyone to know, flows like Niagara Falls during heavy rain, and that stream goes into a culvert on my property, goes underground, you know that, I think you know, it goes into Shangala Park, and then into, under Route one, Benny Park, and out to the sound. If there is undue burden on that stream from anything that happens, I could suffer very significantly. The question then is, whom do I go to? If they do things according to what their plans provide, I don't know that I have any legal recourse with the town. Therefore, all I wanna say is that I hope there will be close continuing scrutiny of the development and of the effects on the wetlands, and in particular, that stream. My basement will suffer, that thing will, that culvert will overflow, and it's gonna go into my property, and there could be untold consequences, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Tessie, but that's extremely important.
Excuse, you should be addressing us.
That's extremely important, and it's extremely important to the, to the overall environment because of the downstream effects of, as I just explained, where that stream goes, right out to Long Island Sound.
That's not the purpose of this hearing.
No, I, I understand, but...
And let's keep the questions to this application.
Right, but the...
And, and so, what we pointed out is, the applicant has received wetlands approval for these two building lots, and I believe, as a neighbor, you would've been noticed about those applications, and if you were concerned about that, you could've addressed them to the Wetlands Agency.
I did.
Okay, and so, I'm just saying, tonight, we're adjusting the subdivision and discussing the open space as it pertains to the subdivision.
I, I understand, I only got shot up because of the comments at the end, because it was my understanding that there would be continuing review of the effects on the wetlands, and now I just heard something that suggested that maybe that was not the case, I wanted to be sure about that.
The, the, the staff of the Wetlands Agency do monitor the properties through development.
Okay.
So, because they have this permit that is for the development of those lots, they, they will be monitoring it during construction.
Right, okay.
And certainly feel free to call Town Hall at any time if there's, if there's an issue, and we'll be...
Okay, and that, I appreciate that, 'cause that, that satisfies my question, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tessie? No moss? We'll close this. That ends the public hearing. There is a discussion item regarding Pickwick Plaza. Is there anyone here who wants to talk about that? Mr. Tessie? Wanna talk to us about Pickwick Plaza?
Sorry about that. I'm here with Jonathan Metz, Mr., a mister, the owner of, oh, Pickwick Plaza's architect. And Jonathan, really, it's his project, and there's a bit of a history, but we're basically here, I think before you, on the issue of the landscaping plans being proposed, or modifications, which include the removal of existing trees, right, so, trying to hone in on the issue and the rationale for the removal, right, does that sum up what we're here to talk about?
No, I think the issue is, you're modifying a site plan that has a stipulated agreement, and per the court, it needs to be submitted as a site plan change, not a landscaping change. That's the discussion.
Well, we could never find the original, maybe you have...
Don't you agree there's an agree, a stipulated agreement?
There was a stipulation that dealt with, the primary purpose of the stipulation was to deal, really, with the entire project, basically, the project itself. As far as the landscaping plans were concerned, and how the site was going to be addressed over the years, that's something that's been ongoing, we doubt that the site itself, in terms of those areas where they were planted, were exactly the same as the original concept, but we don't know that because no one can locate the landscape plan. This plan here is not meant to do anything other than enhance the aesthetics of the property. We're not proposing to increase the, not proposing to increase the amount of impervious surface on the deck, as you notice, it's all built over the parking deck. We're trying to address concerns of our client, given the number of years, there's been no change, to, as I said, increase the aesthetics, and there's been a major issue regarding a few trees as to how much they've grown, and the capacity or the capability of the structure of the garages, or the roofs of the garages, to carry that weight. That's really a safety issue, and it's also, you know, a pretty major construction issue if there, there are failures. Our client, I can tell you, it's like Donald Trump loves, he loves trees, that's not the issue, and he's, this is not about the money, this is about aesthetically making changes.
Right, so, make an application, and so it can be vetted publicly, and vetted by ARC, and...
Well...
And why should this not be an application?
In all my years, I, I've seen plenty of changes to sites, sites involving landscaping.
With a major...
First time.
The water feature needs a building permit. It's over five feet, it's over five feet tall, it needs a building permit.
Look at it this way, earlier this evening, we just had GRENCOM in here for a site plan, and all they were doing is changing the site around, and they, they made an application to us, and it went through this regular way, why is this any different?
First of all, okay, we're here to discuss with you, 'cause this all just kinda came up over the last week or so. I had no idea there was a great fervor on the part of the commission to really have to deal with this site, the overall proposed changes.
No, but I think the concept of a major change to a, to a project in the site, as I, well, I'm, I'm just repeating myself, I mean, an hour and a half ago, we just did this on this, on a project.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, it got submitted, it went through the whole process, and, and I do think that we should bear it.
I think there's a miscommunication here, because I understood your major concern, but it's fine, 'cause I miscommunicate a lot with people, so, that happens. I thought that your major concern was the removal of the trees, not necessarily these change in aesthetics, but that's...
Well, there's a considerable change in the aesthetics, and I do think that the...
Look, Mr. Maylie, I'm not, I'm not sitting here debating you, I just didn't, we wouldn't have wasted, I wouldn't have wasted the hearing, I would've submitted the applicant, I wouldn't have wasted your time.
Okay.
But it's not like it's two o'clock in the morning, we have nothing else to do. So, if you all believe that this is something you don't wanna defer to the town planner, in...
I don't think the town planner wants it.
Well, well, she wants, she has to do whatever you tell her, because she needs her paycheck like the rest of us.
I think if you were taking the existing trees and bringing them back down to three-inch trees because of structural reasons, that's a whole different discussion than changing the landscaping plan, adding a water feature...
Yeah, you think there are material enough site plan changes that it warrants your consideration?
Yes.
Yes.
As I said, there was some miscommunication on that, 'cause I would've spent more time filing the application. Would, you know, I guess you're...
And with that in mind...
My, my only...
And with that in mind?
No, go ahead, I'll let him finish.
Yeah.
No, 'cause he was just gonna say the same thing, that it was a miscommunication.
No, I was actually gonna say something slightly different, my only concern is that, 'cause I would've kind of like gotten this on, I, I would've focused last week on filing the application, I didn't know. But, so, we will not waste any time tonight, 'cause unless there are certain elements of this that you think you wanna pre-discuss.
Well, only, only to the extent that this is truly a major change to a very important part of the avenue of the town and everything, and it's, so I do think it needs to at least get out for, for a public hearing.
I hear you, okay.
The other thing is, I'm a little bit surprised that the, were there any, let me turn it around and do it again, a different way. Were there any other solutions that you, you looked at to support these trees? Were there any other solutions that you, you looked at to support these trees by other than just cutting them down? In other words, were there any other structural fixes that were evaluated to saving these trees?
Jonathan Metz for Perkins Eastman. There are four stories of parking garage under these trees. The structure was never designed to hold trees of this size, or with root, the amount of earth, dense earth, not lightweight, as would be used now, that is mounted up. What has happened now is that we have used up the structural factor of safety. So, now, the, as the trees continue, we start to stress, it's a concrete, it's a reinforced concrete waffle slab garage. We would, in order to support these trees, we would literally have to remove a good portion for four stories of the garage from use, simply to support these trees. And also, they have reached, in terms of life expectancy, they are very shallow, the roots are spread out this way rather than they should be. And our client, as Mr. Tessie said, did not want to remove the trees at all. He wanted to keep the trees, but in doing the analysis of the structure, to do the water feature, which he wanted to do when we were submitting it for A R C review, we, the structural analysis showed that the structural engineer brought up that the tree, these trees, and most of the trees on the property were a problem in terms of stressing the garage structure.
See, the, the trees aren't in a structural location that the water feature's in, so I'm not sure what...
And, and so...
They're separated by considerable, and without...
You know what, can I, okay, we've told them that we like the trees, that we want the trees, that we would like some sort of trees there. I feel like we're beginning to work this structural issues.
No, I think they need to make an application.
And they need to make an application without us sitting here. We're beginning to work, we're beginning to work the problem, and what we said is we want them to come in with an application.
But I think it's fair enough to get to that point.
But we said that, but you heard Richard...
Ms. Albon, if I may, when you return, can you bring a floor plan of the garage below? Great. When you return? I would need the, um, reflective ceiling plans of the garage right below this, I'd like to know what's going on in the ceiling.
But I think that with that submission, the locations of the trees should be shown, because like I say, they're two bays away from this water feature.
And, and also...
The issue is not the water feature, the issue was only that the reason that the trees came up was that, in looking at the water feature, we were now analyzing the entire garage, and in looking at the entire garage structure, we realized that the trees were a problem.
I think that's what you should lead with when you come back, and also, an arborist, if you say the roots are spreading out and they're, they're shallow.
We, we all addressed all of that, but I'm glad you clarified that, because it has not, one has nothing to do with the other. That's how it was discovered to be an issue.
Also, the cons...
An instructional engineer was hired.
From us to lose all those shade trees and put these...
The water.
I mean, and put...
Not a trade-off we're buying into, is I think what we're saying to you, and then can we stop?
Well, people can jump into the water feature and cool off.
I just don't want to review the site plan till we have a site plan.
I just want to make sure they do it.
Okay, we, we, you know what, we understand...
I have Snickers bars tonight, so I'm like...
We understand your, I, I, I think we understand your, we understand where you're coming from.
Um, I'd like to see a section, existing section through the, that area, and the proposed section, because it's, we're going from five feet of soil on top of a slab to three feet of soil on top of a slab, and I want to understand clearly how that works. The materials, the design, you're going to have to submit this for A R C, any lighting, all of that kind of stuff. And any thoughts, any sketches, any idea of an alternative design to removing the trees, if there was some way to re-support them, through the slabs down to the basement, I'd just like to see it, please.
I, I don't think it's, I don't think, I'm just going to say this, it's my view. I think when it's time for a tree to be overgrown, it's in an unnatural spot, and there's only so much can be done, and to force an owner to have to spend an incredible amount of money to protect the safety of his, of his building and his, and his occupants is, is not a fair trade whatsoever.
Well, then, don't do the...
These trees are always going, these trees are always going to have a certain lifespan when they're put on these decks, as was pointed out, but I'm not going to beat it to death. We're going to bring in the arborist, we're going to bring a structural, but sit there and suggesting that we've got to rebuild the garage to save a tree is ludicrous. I'm sorry, ludicrous.
I also would like to see the details of the water features and how they relate to the garages below as well.
Yep.
There'll be, there'll be a structural, structural engineer who will be here to address your issues.
You know, I think what we're asking for is that just that we...
It's a fair ask what you're saying, I don't have a problem with it, but I just think that...
We just want to see where the...
That there has to be a fair balance and understanding about life itself.
Okay.
Nothing lasts forever. Except for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Greenwich, I guess. All right, we got it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, please.
Can I make a quick motion on the minutes?
You can make it speedy quick.
I move the minutes from January 24, 2017, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have, I think, two things that we closed...
I didn't say any names.
I'm, I'm counting the ayes as I hear them. So, we have three closed things in the public hearing.
We have, yeah, actually, four items, because we combined the record.
And do we, do we make separate resolutions on, on Woodland since...
Because they're different owners?
Oh, yeah, you have to.
Okay. And we can't just ask that they be copied? Okay.
We'll just make, obviously, whatever.
How do you get four?
Because they're...
Oh, yeah, parsonage. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Well, since the one is going to likely be more contentious than the others, let's do the easy ones first.
Yeah.
Does anybody feel otherwise?
Start at the beginning.
Well, we're going to skip around over one of them, because it takes some more time, so let's try to get...
Do 18 parsonage.
Let's start with parsonage first.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Nope.
I think the motion, I think, I think then we're ready for a motion on it.
I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit, noting that both the zoning enforcement officer and the Department of Public Works have reviewed this, and going to building permit, that there is no increase in the F A R versus the original proposal, that the conservation department has asked, sorry, has asked for a rain garden bio swale, and that the applicant will be working with, will be working on this design in conjunction with a review by conservation, that as regards the three pear trees in the town right-of-way...
Two. One's a stump.
Oh, one's a stump, okay, two. The tree warden will review it, the nomenclature of kitchen will be removed from the floor plans, and any other outstanding staff and department comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I actually don't think the next one's going to be controversial. I think there's just one vote that...
Okay, then we'll do it. Katie, on this one, we'll probably just do two records, but you're going to have to separate the comments that we...
Fine.
Those would be two different things. Okay.
Same, over.
And watch this, because it's tricky, when he, he sent one, Scott sent us those, the two drainage things today, they both came through on 23.
On what?
On 23. He didn't give us a 23, a 25.
He correctly noted the application numbers, but you're correct, the address is wrong.
So, whatever.
Even though, I'm sorry, even though they're not merging, obviously, they're staying with separate properties.
They're not merging, they're separate properties.
But it's, it's a...
But it's identical approval, so we'll just repeat the motion.
Okay.
Well, it's one plan, the comments reflect the one plan, and so it need...
So, it's got two different lots on it.
And two different lots, so...
Because there are the cross easements, of course, and all that, so they're related in that way.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the, the D P W is okay for the building permit, so I, I think that's good, they just have to work out the language for the easement. We did talk about a number of cross easements on the property that they will provide.
They've got to coordinate, the D P W comment about the sewer manhole with sewer.
Oh, I was going to hold off on the sewer for a minute, but okay.
Well, you said D E P, and I just...
Did I say, I meant D P W?
D P W, that's what I meant, but D P W had the condition on the manhole.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Was that what, I didn't, I thought that was sewer had that.
No, it was D P W.
Oh, God.
That's when Tony said...
I thought that was sewer.
Sewer made the condition to...
Sewer made the comment.
Did the manhole?
Scott said the manhole couldn't go into the town right-of-way.
No, that was sewer.
No, that was Scott.
All right, hold on, we're just double checking.
Unless, last paragraph in the first part.
I don't see any, I don't see anything in his thing that says anything about manholes.
I thought it was, came up with Scott. Somebody brought the Scott comment.
The thing about...
What was in the memos today?
The easement, that he's all about the easement language.
Okay.
So, that's what, yeah.
Because we were talking...
Or the right-of-way.
That it, when we told Tony, we said it was Scott's comment.
Well, that's all right, he didn't really pay...
I don't...
I spoke, I think we...
He was referring to the sewer manhole.
I, I, I know it's in the sewer comments, so I, I'm going to look...
I think that was kind of his point, that how is that possible when the sewer line is in the road?
Is in the street.
So, you obviously have to get into the road, so I think that was part of why he was...
Well, there's nothing in, there's nothing in Scott's memo to us about that. The only thing is that the easement, well, this will be in the language for the easement, but all the parking spaces, he wants them striped, and, and there may be parking meters and things like that, but that'll all be, I guess, covered in the easement. So, I don't think that we need to say anything else about that. Cross easements, I was going to ding Tony on something, but we went so far afoot.
Hmm.
There's no reason to ding him, but whatever. Okay, so, the sewer. I think we're down to the sewer, because the A R C has reviewed the planting.
Along railroad and approved it with some modifications.
Right.
Okay.
That's...
And the wall treatment is okay as well.
They've approved that. So, the sewer.
All right, so, what you guys agreed to, that I have here, is A, that the manhole can't go in the town right-of-way, that there's this issue of the eight-inch pipe going into the six-inch, and that there's a downstream capacity concern, and that all of these are to be addressed prior to building permits or...
No, I, I want something in there that the applicant agreed to, A, either to answer the comment of an eight-inch pipe discharging into a six-inch lateral town sewer.
Agreed to address these issues.
They will change that to a six-inch pipe on-site if, if sewer requires it. B, if sewer says, you've got to keep the eight-inch pipe on-site, and I want you to change the pipe in the street to an eight-inch pipe to increase its capacity, they will do that from the site, they'll do it from west of the site to pick up Greenwich Hardware down to Arch Street. C, anything else that Rich Feminile may require of this site to give a sewer permit?
And we...
Because he's given us some other things about scoping out the...
And we will not issue a zoning sign-off...
A zoning permit without...
Without Richard's approval.
Right, right.
Written approval.
Yeah.
Clearly understandable.
And written in English, no multilangual. Anything else anybody wants to add to this? I guess A R C's done that, so I think it's... Anyone else want to add anything else?
No.
Well, the cross parking easements.
I did ask for the cross easements, yes, cross easements for...
Sorry.
That's all right.
Do you want to mention anything about the setbacks and findings about the setbacks?
Yeah, do you want to do something with the setbacks in the two zones?
Well, I think it's a, it's a, it's a through, okay, let's, it's a through lot, and if you look at our regulation, I think it's six, oh, 121, it actually deals with a through lot, and what it says is that each lot shall have a, a yard, because it's dealt with as a front yard, so it means that the, the R six shall have the front yard on Woodland, and the ones on Railroad Avenue shall have a front yard dimension on, on Railroad. Now, the, they, they've also utilized six, 127 to come up with an average setback on Railroad Avenue for their front yard, so those lot, those yards are both compliant. The side yards are compliant, and as we discussed yesterday, the zone line does not impact any rear yard setbacks. There are no rear yards, there are two front yards. So, that's, anything else on that?
Just wrote tards instead of yards, isn't that right?
I had those numbers, but it's...
We can let, we can just cover.
And, too many sheets.
Okay.
Is that the motion?
Something, no, I'm going to make it.
Well, any other...
No, let me just, let me just run us through it and make sure we've got it, and you guys know that I'm going to vote against it as I make it, okay? Everybody?
That's why I asked if he should make the motion.
No, I don't mind making, and I'm just letting you know that this does not mean that I'm going to vote for it. Maybe that's a better way of putting it. Okay, so...
You're not disclosing your vote before you make a motion.
Okay. Just make sure you know that you're listening or something like that. Okay, so I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit for 23 Woodland Drive. And in so doing, we note that all the cross easements, as required by the Department of Public Works, will be provided, including any provisions for striping parking and meters as appropriate.
That's different, that's, that's the easements. The cross easements have to do with the use of the site.
The separate, the cross easements as well as the easements the D P W wants.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
In addition, I'm going to open with saying that the applicant has agreed to address all the issues raised by the sewer department, and will comply with any other requests and concerns from the sewer department prior to receiving zoning approval. These concerns include a comment that the manhole cannot go in the town right-of-way, that there is an eight-inch pipe flowing into a six-inch pipe, several inspections that they were asked to perform, and that the sewer department has expressed some downstream capacity concerns.
No, I would like to have it in the motion that, that the applicant agreed at this meeting to increase the diameter of the...
I said that.
Of the pipe?
The applicant has agreed to address these issues and go to, and go to a six-inch, maybe I didn't read it out loud, go to a six-inch pipe, or do eight inches the whole way, and comply with all other requests and concerns from the sewer department prior to the receipt of zoning approval. I may not have said the six inch.
I was going to say, one of us is, you didn't say it, or I didn't listen to it.
I had it in front of me, I had it in front of me and didn't read it, sorry.
You know what it is, you just couldn't bring yourself to say it.
I'm just being pissy, I know. I, I needed a lot of Snickers bars to get through that one. As regards the lot itself and the setbacks, this is a through lot, and the setbacks shall provide with a, shall comply with the provisions of six, 121, as well as six, 127, as requires all zones, required yards, and as I mentioned, the setbacks, we, we asked for those steps, and we're just not going to touch on it.
No.
And then, that the landscaping along railroad, as well as the wall treatment that Nick mentioned, have been approved by A R C with some modifications, and any outstanding, any other outstanding staff and departmental comments.
Could, could we just add that we're using the average setback from railroad?
Yes.
I know Richard said that, but under...
That's six, 127, and we mentioned it, but it's good to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I...
Yeah, we mentioned six, 127, that the, that the applicant is utilizing both six, 121 and six, 127, as regards zones, required yards, and setbacks. That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, nay, whatever.
Abstaining?
Okay, no, no, she won't...
Because I have enough information, I can't abstain.
Oh, you can.
It just means you didn't have enough information.
No, come on, let her vote against it.
I voted against it.
She, her heart's in voting against it.
You didn't have Richard's personal comment, so you didn't have enough information to vote?
I did have Richard's personal comment. Okay, so, I hereby make this resolution, I make a motion to approve the final site plan and special permit... to approve the final site plan and special permit for twenty-five Woodland Drive. Can we just copy the previous resolution, or do...
They're very connected, so it's...
Yes.
Yeah.
So just the entirety of the previous resolution be repeated for this property?
Do you want a separate vote on it?
I, I would just say, make the, making the same motion.
Okay, all righty, so here we go.
Well, why don't you just say...
No, no, not, not, you don't have to repeat it verbatim, just...
I just say, make a motion, same as...
Same as twenty-three Woodland.
Right.
That's what I was trying to...
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone opposed to this?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thought you knew. Well, that would have really thrown Tessie out of there.
Eat something, you're getting...
Yeah, talk about, I'm not, I'm really pissy. You want me to give me your tickets to the V I's?
Okay.
Okay, one more.
Okay.
Network, our site plan.
Okay.
Or subdivision, a re-subdivision, actually, I'll get it right.
I hereby move approval of this final re-subdivision at sixty-six and sixty-eight Halsey Drive, and we note that the open space is twenty-point-four percent, that an easement of...
I'm sorry, Margarita, it's gonna be larger than that now that they've added the easement.
No, but the open space, the deeded open space...
The open space is not twenty, it's, with combined, it's twenty, it's, it's less than that. The open space parcel is not equal to twenty percent.
Babe, that's not what is in the staff report, sorry, but in the staff report, it says we have twenty-point-four in open space and six-point-nine percent, and, um...
With easement, though.
P one, no, P one, P one, it's twenty, he has it right on the map. Look at the map.
Oh, it's fifteen, okay, wait, so there's two different sets of numbers, and I, okay.
The, on, the map is four oh two, Todd.
Four oh two?
Four oh two.
Okay, so in the, in the notice, it says...
Twenty-four.
Yeah, but does, I believe that mathematics...
Okay, so you're saying that it can't be right, fifteen and six would be twenty-one, so that's not gonna work either. Can we leave the numbers open and you guys figure it out?
Well, what's the, what's the date, what's the date of the plan?
The date of the new subdivision map is January...
I stand corrected, you are absolutely right, Margarita.
Okay, we're back to, I was right, it's okay.
No, I know, because...
Let's state the map.
Map date.
Map date is January sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, and on it is the summary of the open space, and the division of the open space in relationship to the total parcel is twenty-point-four percent.
Now, that is not what's in the public notice, I just figured that out.
Correct, the plan came in after, after the, but we'll fix it.
Twenty-point-four percent with a, an, an open space, an easement of six-point-nine percent, which shall be modified to include the effect of a request from I W W A, to add into it a small triangle currently not protected, which was in the originally approved, or, which was in the originally...
Why don't you just say that the conservation easement, C one, shall be increased in size to include the triangle to the west?
Because the I W W A approved a certain configuration, and I want to refer back to their approval rather than, than the C one. It was called N one when they approved it.
You see where these dashes are?
Yes, but...
That's the...
I want to refer it back, I think we're better off, since it's their request, and they specifically say...
No, it says to the triangle.
But this is gonna get updated to incorporate it.
Okay, so we're gonna just, whatever we were, the triangle that's gonna be included in, okay.
And then, therefore, the easement area will increase...
The conservation easement, C one, will be increased by the addition of the triangular area to the northeast, west.
To make it in conformance with the I W W A.
Next thing is, there's a small correction to eliminate that ghost open space, right? We're gonna get that fixed, okay?
Well, all the ghosting will be moved.
Richard, you wanted to add the note that the conservation easement is on lot sixty-eight, did you still want to do that?
Yeah, I do, it just, it's clear, but just, that's belts and suspenders.
And pursuant to six two sixty-six, we're gonna show all inch, all trees of ten-inch caliber and above, or not?
No, no.
Okay?
Cancel.
Cancel it, cancel that. We're just gonna say that they're gonna meet the tree requirement of the subdivision regulations.
For new trees or keeping the two existing trees?
That's two sixty-six.
Yeah.
Yep, and then...
Yeah.
And then, trees in the town right-of-way are going to be preserved, the tree warden will review these, and protection to be provided with, in coordination with the town tree warden, and any action in the future shall be, regarding these trees, shall be approved by the tree warden.
Right, means, I'm sorry, just to clarify, they, they will be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Should that not be able to happen, they'll go through the town tree, the process.
Exactly, so that's the tree warden reviews, protections provided in coordination with them, and if there's any change, if anything happens, any actions have to be approved by the tree warden. The applicant, Richard, just correct me where you and Tessie ended up on this, include a summary of previous approvals?
We got that down, and, and the applicant showed me at the note number one, in fact, on the, on the re-subdivision map, takes care of it.
Okay.
It says this plan is a re-subdivision of a property prepared in accordance with la-la-la-la, and to eliminate lot lines depicted on map number eighty-one eighty.
And all other...
So it's done.
And all other outstanding staff and departmental comments. That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, there was some stuff I wanted to keep from this.
Good night.